And welcome to the May 7, 2024 meeting of the Greensboro City Council. We are going to start tonight's meeting with a closed session, but we do intend to return by 5:30. Mary Kay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to go into closed session to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the Greensboro area, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Thurm. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you, and we will be back at 5:30.
Hi, I'm Alexis Armstrong. I'm an artist in residence here at GROW with Creative Greensboro from April 16 to June 10.
GROW is the Greensboro residency for original works, a new place placed at the Greensboro Cultural Center right inside the Davy Street entrance of the building. It's an 800 square foot space for creative programs that are being offered by individuals or nonprofit organizations from Greensboro Creative Community.
My residency is mainly about photography. So what I'll be doing is teaching young girls mainly the ins and outs of photography, but mixing a lot of social media awareness in it. How I plan to mix all of these things together is a little bit of psychology, a little bit of reading, but a lot of hands-on, fun time activities. So we will be taking pictures of each other. We'll do little excerpts of readings to kind of like explain things like body dysmorphia. Like I think that's really big on social media right now. A lot of us don't necessarily know what we look like because we're using filters, we're using the graphic design, we're using the Facetune apps. And then there's people like me, if you go to our studio and you take a picture with us, you're looking at that like, I don't think I look like this. And it's like, you do. You actually do look like this. Let's get comfortable and let's love this, what we actually look like, instead of what we wish we looked like. The passion behind this was my daughter, who's 13. Her name is Paris. And Paris has been struggling with really just accepting her. Last year, I ran a pilot program called She Shot It. And it was basically introducing all of those concepts to a really small group of girls. So giving children, especially young teens, just the confidence to be them. I think that's like something that's like just overlooked these days. My first workshop will be a mommy and me workshop. One of the biggest things that I think that we always forget, especially when we're trying to take pictures of our children, is patience. So giving pointers to parents about the different methods that we could use to get these pictures. So the scavenger hunt, I'm going to do a couple of times, but the first time I'm going to do it is at my opening reception. I'm going to set up different things around the GROW space for those participants that win the scavenger hunt, they'll have an opportunity to get a free session with me here. So they don't have to go anywhere, they just have to come back down here and smile. At the end of this entire residency, what I would like to do is compromise kind of an Instagram grid of the different activities. So every workshop has an activity where you're going to take your own pictures and you're going to send them, hopefully, hopefully send them to me if you feel comfortable, so that I can put them on like an Instagram grid, not a real one, but definitely print it out for our closing reception. If you are interested in attending any of our workshops, and we have a lot of them, you can catch our schedule on 43north77west.com or 43north77west on all social media platforms.
Welcome to Gate City Insider. I'm Rosemary Plybitt. Most of us are at least a little bit familiar with Greensboro's place in the history of the American Revolutionary War. General Nathaniel Greene led about 4,500 American troops into battle against British General Lord Cornwallis and his force of about 2,500. A fierce fight with the British earning a slim victory, but leaving the British vulnerable, leading to a surrender at the Battle of Yorktown just a few months later. Many of us learned in school that the Battle of Guilford Courthouse was where America lost the battle, but won the war. And today, we can revisit our history at Guilford Courthouse National Military Park. Aaron LaRocca is superintendent of the park. He is here for a little walk through the park with us. Hello, welcome.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah, glad to be here. We got to have a walk through the park in the fall, and so now we're going to share a little bit of that with folks. Let's talk first a little bit about you, though, because I'm interested, what was your road to becoming a park superintendent?
I appreciate the question. So I've been a National Park Service employee for about 18 years. I actually started as a volunteer. I was a history student at George Mason University, and a park ranger volunteer coordinator sent out a recruitment email. I had no idea what I was going to do with my career. I said, oh, maybe I'll try volunteering for the National Park Service. It worked out. At the time, the Park Service had a hiring authority. I was able to get a temporary position, turned into a permanent position. From there, as a park ranger volunteer coordinator, getting to facilitate volunteer activities, it was one of my favorite times in my career. People giving of themselves, their time, their talent, to help meet the mission of the National Park Service. Supervisory Park Ranger at Clara Barton National Historic Site in Glen Echo Park. All my time at the Park Service before coming to Greensboro was in a park outside of Washington, DC called the George Washington Memorial Parkway. My final assignment at the Parkway was I was the chief of staff, supporting that superintendent with all our external-facing responsibilities. I was the liaison to our nonprofit partners, congressional liaison, public information officer.
A lot of hats.
Quite literally, a lot of hats, yes.
And so how did you end up here?
So this job was announced, and in the National Park Service, people compete for jobs, so I was lucky enough to do okay on the interview. And then from there, the position was offered to me, so I've been here for about almost two years. It'll be two years in May of 2024.
We're glad to have you. Had you, before you got involved as volunteering first with the parks, had you visited many national parks?
I grew up going to parks, yes.
Okay, good, yes, it was a thing.
So there's a, there's a program in national parks where you can get your passport stamped. And so my family grew up doing that, and I ended up working in some of those parks where I got my passport stamped.
That is cool.
Yeah, I got a passport stamp for Clara Barton National Historic Site in 1988. And then 20 years later, I was working there as a supervisory park ranger.
Did you have one for here, though?
I did, for my first day on the job.
Your first day on the job you got. You still have the passport?
I do, yes.
Oh, that is super fun.
It's our family book, so it has, you know, nearly 40 years' worth of visiting national parks.
That is a great story. I love that. Okay, let's, let's go back a little bit further in history, fast when you were a little boy.
Sure.
And talk about what Greensboro was like in the late 1700s.
So no Greensboro. So at the time of the Battle of Guilford Courthouse, Guilford County was a new county within the state of North Carolina, and there was a small town, Martinsville, that was on a road. The road that we now call New Garden Road was known as Salisbury Road, and there was a courthouse there with a small hamlet of about 50 residents at the time of the Battle of Guilford Courthouse, eight miles from what is now present-day downtown Greensboro.
Okay, so it looked a little bit different, you're saying?
A little bit different, for sure.
So set the stage for the battle just a little bit. What led to really this confrontation between General Greene and Cornwallis?
Sure, so this is the Southern Campaign of the American Revolutionary War. Most people associate the Revolutionary War with the Northeast, but there was a Southern Campaign primarily focused around Charleston, where the British Army, led by General Cornwallis, was seeking to gain support, supplies, resources for their war effort in an attempt to break apart the colonies, essentially to divide and conquer. So General George Washington sends General Nathaniel Greene down to confront Cornwallis as part of the Southern Campaign, and they, for lack of a better description, chase each other around the North Carolina and South Carolina countryside and have a number of conflicts. The most significant conflict being here outside of Greensboro, or present-day Greensboro, at the Battle of Guilford Courthouse.
Okay, and so what did that look like? What are some stories from that actual battle?
So the, the main takeaway was this defense-in-depth strategy used by General Nathaniel Greene. It was a strategy that the Continentals, or the Americans, had used early in the war to great success, and they, they used it here at Guilford Courthouse. It was Greene's idea to line up his most inexperienced troops in the front line. There was three lines, so the first line would have been the most experienced troops, the most trained, well-trained troops, the regulars, would have been on that third line. And what happens is the British essentially slam into these defensive positions, and because of the defensive positions, the Americans, the Continentals, are able to inflict a lot of casualties on the British. So the British pushed the Americans off the battlefield, but because of this defensive strategy, all those casualties, which then later leads to the surrender of General Cornwallis to General Washington at Yorktown.
You know, it's hard for us to kind of get a view or an idea of like what battles were like. Like how long did this last?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's about two and a half hours.
Yeah, I mean, so it wasn't days and days.
That's right. And it's a series of conflicts. So there's a number of conflicts that are part of this Southern Campaign. That Guilford, the Battle of Guilford Courthouse is just the largest. So people are familiar with Cowpens or Kings Mountain. Earlier in the war, there was a battle at Morris Creek, which is another National Park Service site also located in North Carolina. So there were a number of conflicts within the Revolutionary War in North and South Carolina, but Battle of Guilford Courthouse was the definitive one of the Southern Campaign.
Right, right, okay. So immediately after the battle, immediately after the war, were there any efforts to kind of preserve or mark the area of this battle?
No, it's nearly forgotten about until 100 years later, when a man named Judge David Shank comes to Greensboro and wants to essentially redeem the battlefield from oblivion. And so as a private citizen, he purchases the first land. He also starts a nonprofit organization called Guilford Battleground Company. It's a group of local leaders, and together, they start to acquire the property that later becomes Guilford Courthouse National Military Park.
How did he even know where it was? I mean, how did, how did he figure that out?
Yeah, so had to work with the people who, it was a farm site, that's, that's one of the first. So he talked to that family, he engaged with the family, did his own research, did kind of excavations, what we would consider excavations, finding artifacts to kind of identify key areas of the battlefield.
So I mean, really, storytelling was such an important part of, you know, finding the way and marking what had happened, because it just, there hadn't been care to do that.
It wasn't marked, that's right.
Yeah, it really wasn't.
It wasn't preserved, yeah.
So when did it become part of the national park system?
So in 19, through the Guilford Battleground Company, they start engaging Congress, right? They first start engaging Congress for money for monuments and memorials in the park. And then in 1917, what we refer to as our enabling legislation is passed, and that enabling legislation does three things. It transfers the land that was originally owned by Guilford Battleground Company to the National Park Service. It designates Guilford Courthouse as a national military park. National parks can have multiple designations. People are familiar with seashores, or parkways, or national parks, or recreation areas. Guilford Courthouse National Military Park is established by this law passed in 1917. It also gives future park managers the authority to acquire property that would have been part of this original battlefield.
Okay, so, and we talk about the original battlefield, and we think about where the park is today, that is, it's not just that area, though, right?
No, it's a much smaller portion of that original battlefield. So currently, the National Park Service manages about 250 acres of a thousand-acre battlefield. So the battlefield would have stretched both north and south of the park, what is now into kind of the neighborhoods that surround the park, also into the cemetery that is on, shares a boundary with the park. So yeah, the original, or the park is much smaller than that original battlefield.
All right, so we're going to dive into this a lot more, like what the park is today, how people use, how they've used it over the years, how they're using it today, what's ahead in the future. We're going to skip a little bit ahead to present day, leave the 1700s behind, find out exactly what's going on at the park right now, how you can be more a part of it, and how it can be part of the future of the park. That's coming up after this break. Stay with us. Welcome back to Gate City Insider. Today, we're taking a short trip to Guilford Courthouse National Military Park for a much longer trip through history to our nation's very founding, in fact. Aaron LaRocca is the park superintendent. He is here with us today. Hello again. All right, let's talk a little bit, we talked about the history of the park, the land, how it's actually, what we mark as the park is a much smaller area than the actual battlefield that would have taken place in the 1700s. So how has, since it's become a park, how has it been used over the years? What has that looked like?
So the original intent of the people who first preserved the battlefield was to create a destination for patriotic pilgrimage. It was the idea of the Guilford Battleground Company that people would come from all over North Carolina to see other North Carolina patriots. So they start to erect monuments and memorials to people who fought in the Battle of Guilford Courthouse, or other battles related in North Carolina, other monuments and memorials to Revolutionary War and pre-Revolutionary War battles. They start to reinter people, so North Carolina patriots at the Battle of Guil, or excuse me, at
At the battlefield, yeah, the park, yeah.
At the battlefield, yes, yes. For instance, two of the three signers of the Declaration of Independence from the state of North Carolina are currently buried at the park, right? So it's their idea that people would come to Guilford Courthouse National Military Park to reconnect with their patriotism.
And to learn about history, of course, yeah.
Yes.
So now, what has that evolved into? What does that look like now? I mean, that's still happening, I suppose, yeah.
Yes, yeah. So we encourage people to come and learn about the battle and the significance of the place, and why it's preserved as part of the National Park Service for future generations. But it also serves as a destination for recreation, right? It's part of the green space landscape in the city of Greensboro. So people come to the park for their daily workout, or to walk their dog in this place that's preserved because of its connection to the Revolutionary War.
Okay, let's talk about recreation for a minute. So what, what things are allowed, what's not allowed, and how much space is there? Trails, paved, walkways, all of that in the park?
Yep, so there's about four miles of paved, what we would call inner trails. They're referred to as inner trails because we have the tour road, which is a loop that people, and both on the inner trails and on the loop road, people walk, they ride their bikes. You're allowed to ride your bike on the tour road, not on the inner trails, and they walk their dogs. It's all about appropriate recreation. This is hollow ground. As I just said a minute ago, people are reinterred there, people are buried there, people lost their lives there. So it's about appropriate recreation. So you can go next door to Country Park for a zipline or paddleboat experience, but you won't find that in Guilford Courthouse National Military Park.
Any other rules that, you know, you want visitors to be very aware of when they're using the park for recreational purposes?
All the rules are posted and listed, so I'd encourage you to do that research before you come. There are appropriate places for picnicking in the park. You can picnic at Hoskins Farmstead, which is historically operated as a farm, but it's all about appropriate recreation in what I would call the core area of the park.
Right, okay. So for those who want to really learn about the history, to, to visit, to see sacred spaces, how is the best way to explore and do that?
So for those who come Monday through Sunday, first stop, Visitor Center, right? Interact with a park ranger. There's nobody who knows more about that place, whether we're talking about the recreational opportunities available to visitors, or the history, than the, the park rangers. They do a wonderful job. The park rangers, you can go through and get a brochure. That brochure has a park map. It'll talk about what kind of recreational opportunities, the map for the tour road and the other trails that are available to people. But it'll also give you some idea of the significance of the place. So that brochure is a great way to start to kind of introduce yourself to the park. There's also a lot of programs that we have called Junior Ranger Program. So for our younger visitors who want to come to the park, and they can earn a similar-looking badge.
Okay.
It's not this badge, but a similar-looking badge if you complete a number of activities in our Junior Ranger Program. And we always offer, maybe a great way to visit the park is using this. So through the National Park App, we offer a number of different kind of mobile experiences. You can take a driving tour, you can take a walking tour, you can take a monuments tour, all available on your phone. So if you don't want to use the brochure, you're there when the park, when the Park Visitor Center is closed, you can experience it using your phone.
What are some places that are kind of off the beaten path, that people maybe don't often stop by, but maybe would get a lot out of if they did?
So a lot of the recreational users use the tour road for their recreational activity. I think they like it because it's a little bit more open, it's a loop, you're not going to get lost, right?
Yeah.
You know where you're going. But I love walking on the inner trails. It's almost like an oasis in an urban or suburban setting, right? Especially in the, in the summertime when leaves are out, you can get, you can literally get lost out there. But one of the reasons I enjoy it so much is because you get a true sense of the topography of the park, and that topography really plays into the history to understand the defensive lines in the, in the battle that unfolded there.
Yeah, you really have to think, you can also see a lot of wildlife
That's right.
in the, in the park.
Do some, I was walking in the park the other day. We saw, had some piliated woodpeckers and a whole bunch of other neat birds and tree species to check out.
And I see deer just about every time I'm there, and they just watch you walk. They're so used to the people now walking by.
Yeah, I see them every day, kind of wave to the deer family, yes, yes.
They're friends, yeah, yeah. All right, you might see some construction happening in the park. What's going on there?
So very exciting. Over the course of the last 18 months or so, the park has been awarded nearly $2 million in special project funds to undertake some special efforts in the park. The park's annual operating budget is $1.3 million, so to bring in $2 million just for construction projects is significant. So yes, later this year, we're going to start and kick off a trail rehabilitation project. So all those inner trails that I was referencing, the asphalt trails, they'll all be replaced in kind. As part of that project, we're going to improve the accessibility around the Green Monument, which is kind of the core area of the park and the visitor center. We've also brought in funds to rehab the Cobal Barn, which is part of the Hoskins Farm Site. So yeah, we're very excited about some upcoming construction projects and the benefits to the visitors.
The reenactment is a really a popular way to experience a battle. And explain what that is and why it doesn't actually happen in the National Military Park.
So that's right. The reenactment takes place next door at Country Park, and it is a reenactment of the battle that happened at Guilford Courthouse. Country Park actually sits in the footprint of that thousand-acre battlefield. The National Park Service has a policy across the National Park Service does not allow for battle reenactments on National Park Service property, because it's very challenging to actually recreate a battle.
Right.
You can't recreate the horror, the loss, the fear, right? And so it is policy of the National Park Service to not host reenactments on National Park Service property.
Okay, so that happens in the spring in, in Country Park, and so people can find out more about that. If you want to get more involved, what are ways to support the park?
So shout out to the staff. There's 11 of us there who work extremely hard to ensure that our resources are preserved and protected for future generations, the mission of the National Park Service, and to provide access to this place and recreational opportunities. There's 11 of us. The mission of the Park Service is to preserve this place for future generations. So it's kind of daunting to think that 11 of us have to preserve this place in perpetuity. So we rely on co-stewardship, right? Those people who give of themselves, the volunteers who help give programs, or help with projects in the park, right? The people who have experiences in the park. You talk about your experience with the deer, right? That creates a connection. The goal of the National Park Service is to create connections for visitors so that you understand the value of this place, whether you're, the value you assign to it is because of a Revolutionary War battle, or because you like to walk your dog there. You have a connection to that place. That connection, in theory, helps you to steward that place, look after it. So that's our goal as the National Park Service, is to create opportunities for shared stewardship to preserve this place for future generations.
So along those lines, you know, what is it you really hope people get out of a visit to the park?
Something that's for you. I want you to create a connection that makes that place meaningful for you, whether that's a recreational opportunity, whether that's a deeper connection to the Patriots of North Carolina, to the battle, whatever that might be for you. Why is this place important for you? If you can identify why that place is important for you, you'll help me preserve it for future, you'll help us preserve it for future generations.
Yeah, because it's on all of us.
It is on all of us.
It is on all of us. Thank you. Okay, so we dove into the historic battle, we took a visit to the park today. Next, we're going to kind of look into the future, pull out the crystal ball a little bit, try to figure out what's going to be happening with that park, and what it might look like for those future generations that we're working so hard to preserve it for. So stay with us. Welcome back to Gate City Insider. History, national pride, beautiful landscape, maybe just a place to burn calories. We have lots of reasons to visit Guilford Courthouse National Military Park. Superintendent Aaron LaRocca hopes that you will come for any reason, that any or all of those reasons, just to become a steward of the park. Hello again. Okay, so we talked about, before we talk about the future really of our hometown park, tell us a little bit more about the National Park Service. How do you work with cities, counties, community groups, volunteers? How do you all work together and make that work to, as you said, further the mission, become stewards of the park to keep it around for future generations?
Yeah, again, shout out to the staff. There's 11 of us responsible for preserving this place in perpetuity, so we really rely on this shared stewardship model. And in my time at Guilford Courthouse National Military Park, that shared stewardship model is strong. We talked about Guilford Battleground Company. That original battleground company kind of folded because there was no reason for them to exist, and then
They got there, they reached their goal, yeah.
They reached their goal, but then in the 80s, another nonprofit using that same name was restarted. So there is currently a nonprofit, the official nonprofit partner of Guilford Battleground National Military Park is GBC, Guilford Battleground National Military Park is GBC, Guilford Battleground Company. So, it's a group of volunteers who help support the park in all kinds of different opportunities, whether that's facilitating special events around Anniversary Weekend, or we just recently had a shared success with a partner where we were able to procure Canon. So, there's a lot of different things that we work on with GBC to help preserve the park and create those opportunities for transformative experiences. But there's a number of other stakeholders, too. We work closely with the daughters and sons of the American Revolution, people who have ancestral connection to the Battle of Guilford Courthouse. So, those are important responsibility, important partners.
Partners, yeah.
Yeah. And then the city has been a wonderful partner. Shout out to the leadership of the city of Greensboro and their engagement with the National Park Service and helping us to do some special events and programs. One that we hosted in the park last year was an attempt to elevate the story of the African-American patriots of the Battle of Guilford Courthouse. Through the city's leadership, there's a bus that goes around the city, a GTA bus, that identifies black patriots of the Revolutionary War, and you can see this flag on this bus. This is the flag of the Battle of Guilford Courthouse. I love this as a symbol of the Battle of Guilford Courthouse, because imagine, as a militia person, you coming without any connection to the person standing in line next to you, all unified under this one symbol. So, I think this serves as a beautiful symbol, a modern-day symbol, that brings all these stakeholders together in support of the National Military Park.
I can't imagine, correct me if I'm wrong, are there many national parks that are right in the middle of a city like this one?
There are, but not that many in North Carolina.
Right, right.
Right? And so, yes, that is unique. But a lot of people don't realize that, for instance, the National Mall is managed and run by the National Park Service. So, yes, that does happen, but it's unique for North Carolina.
Yeah. And so, that has to present some interesting challenges as well. What are some of the things that are going to challenge?
I like to think of them as opportunities.
Opportunities, okay. Tell us about those opportunities.
Right. Well, it's an opportunity for shared stewardship, right? We obviously have a lot of key stakeholders. We're in the same space. We have neighbors, right? Those neighbors are key stakeholders, are users of the park, so we engage with them. So, it's a challenge because we have shared boundaries, but it's an opportunity for us to help meet the mission of the Park Service, which is preserve this place for future generations.
We don't think about it as a growing park, but it actually is. Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. I mean, originally, it starts with 30 acres, and we're up to 250 acres. That enabling legislation, 1917 Congress Acts, it allows us to procure, acquire all properties associated with the thousand-acre battlefield. We were only up to 250 acres. So, we continue to acquire properties when available to better preserve the landscape and present it to the public as you would have seen it in 1781 at the time of the battle.
Okay. So, explain what that looks like. I mean, so, we took a little walk right around kind of the boundaries of what is now the park, not of the battlefield by any stretch of the imagination. And there's some homes around there, but some of them, and some, there were spaces where homes used to be, and now they are cleared. Talk about what's happened there and what's happening there.
So, primarily in one section of the park adjacent to the Hoskins Farm Site, the National Park Service has been successful working with the local residents to acquire properties. So, opposed to selling them on the open real estate market, they come to an agreement with either the nonprofit partner, GBC, Guilford Battleground Company, or with the National Park Service to transfer that property or sell that property to the federal government. And so, we've been successful in acquiring a few properties. As you pointed out, we recently demoed one, which really opened the landscape of that Hoskins Farm Site, which is key to the interpretation and education of understanding the battlefield, to see kind of this open landscape as it would have been in 1781. But then there's other neighbors who have agreed to a life estate. So, once they move on from their home, to transfer that property to the National Park Service so that we can preserve it for future generations.
That is really exciting. So, I mean, really, it could look very, I mean, 100 years from now, likely, this park looks a lot different than what we know it right now.
And we've been talking about shared stewardship, right? I mean, what?
That's the whole, yeah.
Yeah.
What better example?
What better example of shared stewardship than working to preserve this for future generations?
And to bring it back to what it maybe was hundreds of years ago. There are also some studies and surveys happening that really will impact how we enjoy and use the park for decades to come, and people can kind of be a part of that.
Yes.
Can you tell us what that looks like and how that's happening?
So, I'm a new superintendent to Guilford Courthouse National Military Park. So, one of the first things I wanted to do was understand the existing management documents and the decisions that my predecessors had to make that, you know, influenced my decision-making moving forward. And so, I went to one of those existing documents. It's known as the General Management Plan. This document was printed in 1997.
Oh, not too long ago.
Well, it depends on your perspective. Fair enough. But I think, you know, I like to point out that in 1997, the park didn't look the same, and the city of Greensboro certainly didn't look the same.
No, not at all.
Right? So, for my management and the park management decisions moving forward, this is not a useful decision-making tool. So, over the course of the last year or so, we've engaged with planners from, within the National Park Service, with the city, with the stakeholders that we had mentioned, to do something called the Development Concept Plan, a DCP, which will make management recommendations for all things from the treatment of our facilities, the management of our facilities, to visitor access and circulation, to the management of the cultural landscape. So, it'll be kind of a refresh of this document, making management recommendations for the next 20 to 30 years.
A business plan, strategic plan, it's kind of all that wrapped up into one, if you worked on those before.
And then, if I could, there will be an opportunity later this year for the public to provide feedback. It'll be the second opportunity for the public to provide feedback as part of this planning effort. We pushed out some concepts last summer. We took that feedback, tweaked the concepts, and then finalizing those ideas to push back out to the public for an additional round of public comment.
And we know that people are really interested, especially people who live around there, work, use it to get around, whether walking, driving.
Certainly, yes.
Biking. And so, all of that's really important. We're going to have you back to talk with us once you kind of get those next recommendations.
Can't wait.
Yes, so that we can share that, and you can get some good feedback from people. So, stay tuned on that. What, when we just talked about the park and the space, what really excites you about the possibilities?
Oh, that's a great question. Thank you. I think the opportunities to create stewards, I've never been in a park where there's no bigger opportunity to create more stewards for this place. Working through our partners, looking at our recreational activities and allowing, for instance, additional picnicking in areas of the park, to allow people to create those connections for shared stewardship. One of the things that we've been working hard, under the leadership of a few key stakeholders and city leadership, is to elevate the story of the black patriots of the Revolutionary War, right? 52% of the population of the city of Greensboro is black and brown. Well, if we're not telling that story, we're not reaching those people who could also be stewards of this place, right? The goal here is to create that connection. So, if we elevate that story, we're able to hopefully create that connection and create the next generation of stewards for the park.
And we're not telling the whole story either, if we don't tell all the stories.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's for sure. Well, thank you so much for spending some time with us. We will visit with you soon and find out more about the upcoming plans. We should tell you, the park grounds are accessible to visitors every single day of the year. The Visitor Center, if you want to get, you know, get a head start on some of the history lessons, is open nine to five, Wednesdays through Sundays. The battle reenactment that happens annually, March 16th and 17th, in Country Park. So, be sure to follow Greensboro Parks and Recreation for more information on that. And once again, thank you for spending some time with us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the tour. I'll see you out there before too long.
All right. Here's your stewardship flag.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I will keep that with, keep this with pride. I appreciate that. That is our time today. Thank you for spending some of yours with us. For all of us here at Greensboro Television Network, have a great day. Craving Latin flavors? You have to try Sofrito Latin Innovation Kitchen. You'll come for the food, and you'll come back for the flavor and the people.
Hi, my name is Stephen White. I'm one of the owners at Sofrito Latin Innovation Kitchen in High Point, North Carolina.
My name is Angelica Di Arco, and I'm the owner of Sofrito Latin Innovation Kitchen in High Point, North Carolina. When I was little, I pretty much grew up working in a restaurant. My dad had a restaurant when I was little, when I was born. And so, I got all the memories from it, the cooking, the running back and forth, the yelling, all that stuff in the back of my mind. Every time I think about restaurants, I just think about that. Later on, when I was in high school, he went back to having restaurants. And at that time, well, I had to help out at the restaurant.
For me, it was cooking in the kitchen with my mom at an early age. She made everything from scratch. I'm the youngest out of eight, so she made bread in-house, cooked breakfast, lunch, and dinner from scratch every day. I would help her knead the bread or get to punch it down when it had risen. My dad, the thing that my dad taught me was sausage gravy and biscuits, so I still do that all the time today as well, but southern foods. My dad was from Texas, my mom from Arkansas. I was working at, yeah, I was working at River Landing at Sandy Ridge as the executive chef. She was one of the servers there.
Yeah.
And she was, she came up to me because she was doing a project on starting a restaurant, so she asked me to be her mentor, and things led from there.
Yeah. I was sure I was going to be like the owner of the biggest chain of restaurants in Colombia. That was my thing when I was little. But it didn't turn out that way. My dad did not want me to be in restaurants at all. So, you know what? I'm going to go to school for, it's called Hotel and Tourism Administration. I said, I will not be in the kitchen, I will be in a hotel, okay? He was like, that is fine. So, I worked for hotels for a while, and I said, you know what? I like the kitchen. So, that's why, and then I got a job at River Landing, and I said, you know what? Maybe I should start selling my empanadas.
No one's doing empanadas here in Greensboro or High Point.
Yeah.
So, let's start off as that, as one of our appetizers. And then, we just built from the menu on that. So, we do a little bit of different things from Mexico, El Salvador, Colombia, Puerto Rico, Venezuela, Brazil, just different varieties of Latin foods.
But before we opened the restaurant, it took us almost two years planning everything. And the year before we opened the restaurant, we went to Colombia. So, he got to cook with my sisters. He ate all the street food you can think of, everything. I was so worried. I was like, yeah, you're going to get sick out here. And he was like, I'm fine, I'm fine. I've been in South Arabia, so I can eat everything. And he did not get sick. So, we did, he experimented everything, how we cooked the food. And then, after five days, I was like, hey, I need to take you to a real restaurant. You know, you need to go back to United States and say that we have nice restaurants here, too. So, because it was all street foods, the vendors, the lady that sells this food in the corner, that's all we were eating over there for a while. And then, so, we went to a restaurant, the last two days, we went to nice restaurants.
We went to a couple of different nice restaurants.
A couple of nice restaurants over there. So, he really had that whole experience. He even, we have a video making the tamales, the big pastel tamales, Colombian tamales with my niece. And then, so, it was very great. And I think he really nailed, you know, the flavors and transferred that into American.
It was a good trip, because I did get to taste their flavors. And coming back, I could put that flavor into our food.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And then, so, we did, we had some friends that were from other countries, too, and then they came over, they showed us how they make their food, and then this is how we, you know, kind of put together our menu with different countries in it. And I think it helped us, you know, stay in business for all these years. It's just the fact that you come here and you can decide, okay, I'm going to eat something from this country or something from another country. We can explain the food to them, too. We had like the first three years of our business at the mall, we spent more time explaining the food and how we make it than actually selling it, right?
You do. You have to educate the customer. You really do.
It was, it was fun, and it was very rewarding, because a lot of our customers came back with other customers, and then they explained the food to other ones. So, it was really cool. And also, the names that they would come out with, when they didn't remember the arepa, you know? Remember that corn cake, thin, round, that you fill it? And say, yes, arepa. I said, yes, that one is good. So...
There's quite a few favorites. Looking at the menu, empanadas are going to be your number-one seller. The arepas, the baja fish tacos, bistec con tostones, the bandeja paisa is super-popular. We're going to have that prepared for you here in a minute, so you can get some pictures of it. But that's the Colombian national meal. We can explain it when you see, when you see it. The Cuban sandwich, the chorosco sandwich are very popular. The ropa vieja has a very popular seller as well.
Yeah. ropa vieja sells very well. It is pulled beef. And then, how do you make the pulled beef? Is it like a?
It's basically braised beef. You're going to season, sear your beef. We saute some vegetables, and we braise it in a rich tomato broth.
And we serve it with rice, beans, and rice, beans, plantains, rice, and the ropa vieja. ropa vieja is, literally, is like a old clothes.
It translates to old clothes.
You know, when the clothes went to the denis, are so old, you wear so much, they're really shredded apart. That's how it is called. And then, we also realized that, and it is, I thought it was a Colombian thing, literally. And then, when I came here, it was, okay, Cubans, they do ropa vieja, Colombians, they do carne de esmeraldas, and then the Venezuelans do pavillon, same thing, in the same side plate, you know? And then, and then the pulled beef, you know, and the pulled pork, they really, really, you know, transfer into what Americans like. So, and he did a very good recipe of it. And then, the pulled pork is from Puerto Rico, right?
The Pernil.
The Pernil. And then, I think that's, the ropa vieja has been favored just because of how long it takes to cook it. It is slowly cooked throughout the night, and then it's really, really, all the flavors are like inside the meat, it's really good. Yeah.
I've been in the kitchen for over 20 years in the back, so the front of the house for me now is just like amazing. Getting to talk to the customers, seeing their expressions on their faces, them just complimenting the food, it's just, it's amazing.
Well, for me, it's totally the opposite. I was in the front with the customers. I was the one talking to the customers all the time. And then, now being in the kitchen, cooking, I just totally love it. I love it. I love the smells. I love the, the thrill of having all those tickets to cook and all the orders coming in, and everything happens in two hours, and you have to rush, rush, rush. I totally love it. And then, hearing the customers, how much they like the food is also very important. And then, we, every once in a while, we come out here, and I always explain, if I have time, we come here, and if it's a new customer, especially, we explain everything, everything from how we eat it, where we got it from, what's in it, you know? And making friends. I mean, we've made so many friends at this restaurant. It is. And we have customers that come here from when we open, like our first customers, they still come here, and they're very proud to be our first customers.
Seven years later.
Seven years later.
Sofrito is open for lunch and dinner Monday through Friday. Find them on Skeet Club Road, just past Highway 68.
The following segments are pre-recorded and sponsored by Longworth Productions.
Back now on this special edition of Try Today, as we salute some of the folks that work behind the scenes in the city of Greensboro to help improve quality of life for everyone. And one of those folks that does that day in and day out is our special guest, first-time time visitor to the show, Reginald Mason. And he says, some people call him Reggie. So you want me to call you Reggie?
Reggie's fine.
All right. He says his wife calls him Reginald when he gets in trouble. Reginald Reggie is Director of the Transit Department for the City of Greensboro. I'm so glad you're here. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here.
We talked before we started taping the show that you're originally from Houston. But aside from that, tell us a little bit about your background, how you came to be here.
Well, I've been working in mass transit well over 25 years now. I've worked in Chicago, Houston, Phoenix.
Baltimore, wasn't it?
San Francisco, Baltimore, and Atlanta.
Yeah.
I've worked both on the private side as consultant and on the agency side.
Yeah, with all that experience, and I'm thinking, gosh, Chicago and Baltimore and all these big cities, some people would say, well, gee, you know, what drew you to Greensboro?
Well, what drew me to Greensboro was really, you know, this current city manager, Tola Joe, but he has a vision for the city of Greensboro and mass transit. And as I looked at the job and the go-borrow plan, which was rolled out recently, it really piqued my interest in coming to Greensboro. And then I applied for the position, of course, was hired.
Right. So you're, sorry, you're saying sort of that your vision sort of aligns right with the city managers?
Yes, it does. Actually, it really, really does when it comes to mass transit and how we want to grow mass transit, not only just in the city of Greensboro, but in the region to help with the economic development and employment hubs that are moving to our region.
You mentioned, you dropped the phrase on me a second ago, and I think I interrupted you, but you mentioned the term go-borrow.
Yes.
Now, does that have anything to do with the kind of the long-range vision you're talking about? Explain what that's all about.
Okay, well, the go-borrow plan is a long-range transit plan. What we're looking at essentially by 2045, the city of Greensboro being car optional. And with this particular plan, when it was introduced, we introduced two concepts, a ridership concept and a coverage concept. And with that plan, with the ridership concept, it's more frequent service throughout the city and access to jobs and more, you know, doctor's appointments, shopping, things like that. Which when I say frequent service, I mean 15-minute service on the majority of our routes.
Right.
On the coverage side, that would expand our service throughout the community, but still would be a similar type service that we have now, which is 30-minute and 60-minute type service. The ridership concept, like I said, will give folks more access to jobs and more frequent bus service.
And that's the key to everything in it, Reggie, is that access, because that can be a barrier to people trying to get jobs, to healthcare and everything, right?
Yes, it is. That's a, that's a big barrier right now. Because our current system, we call it a hub-and-spoke system, where all of our buses go into the depot. This system has been like that essentially since 1946.
That's right.
So we need to make some major changes in mass transit to improve how we get folks around the community.
You know, some folks could be watching this and listening to you and say, well, that's fine, Reggie, but you know, what does this really mean to me as an individual? How can I support what you're trying to do, what your vision is? Or can the community help support it?
Well, how that can help is, you know, right now, like I said, with the go-borrow plan, we're gonna be, we had a consultant that went out and did surveys for us in the community. We received over seven, 1,700 respondents, and they were all positive, you know, about which concept we should use, ridership and our coverage.
So you get input from people?
We get input from people. And also, you know, to do this, you know, we would have to go on the ballot to get a transit tax to support the growth of mass transit.
I got you. So when that comes about, you're gonna need everybody pulling together.
We're gonna need everyone pulling together because, you know, right now, you know, there's a phrase that the American Public Transportation Association uses that says, as public transit grows, the community grows.
Absolutely.
And what they mean by that, it brings in a lot more economic development.
I'll tell you what, you, I just think what you're doing is great, and I'm glad you're on the job and have that vision and everything. I want to put it up on the screen before I forget, greensboro-nc.gov. It's the general website, which we'll keep reminding folks about throughout the program. Reggie, thanks so much for what you're doing, and I'm glad you're here and doing it.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
All right. Will you come back sometime?
Yes, I will.
All right. For all of us here on Try Today, I'm Jim Longworth. We'll see you next week.
After years of working in restaurants for other people, a husband and wife team decided it was time to take their love of food on the road.
My family business in Mexico has been always involved with food. So as a kid, I remember helping my mom with the family business, peeling up corn to sell corn on the, on the circos. And all the way until I moved to the United States, my first job was on a Mexican restaurant. So it's, it's been my whole life, pretty much.
Well, mine is just with my grandma, you know? She had delicious cooking and I didn't really have the, that business experience until I got here to this country. I started serving tables at the restaurant where we met, actually. And, you know, that, I did not know, especially because I'm not Mexican. So I had to learn the food, Mexican food and all that. But I loved it. And I mean, it's been 20 years since then and, yeah.
Here we are. She came to the restaurant that I managed back then, when we met. And after a couple visits from her mom and herself at the restaurant, we talked and I offered a job as a waitress. So that's where we got.
He didn't need a waitress back then, but he offered me a job anyway.
I've been on the Mexican restaurant scene for 20, 20 years or so. I knew I wanted to do something for our own. No, I didn't know I wanted to be working for the restaurant industry all my life. So a restaurant, it was, it was hard to picture because of the money that needs to be invested on a restaurant. So when we saw the food trucks getting alive in town, we said, okay, probably we can afford something small. And that's, we had an opportunity to get us a small trailer. And that's how we started on the food truck business. When I, when we started the business, it was my, my best friend, which is my, my brother, Alex, and myself, that's, that's, we started the two of us. And right before Cobit, so since everybody calls like brothers, we said, we didn't have much time to think about the name. So we said, let's just call it Taco Bros.
Taco and Bro.
And we've always been fan of Nintendo and Mario Bros. So that was something, a little bit of that involved on the name too. Our food comes from, is similar as downtown Mexico City. I mean, we serve, our tacos that we serve is the same way that you're gonna item in downtown Mexico City. We don't do anything different in, or fancy. We just stick to what we know people liked and what we know how to do best. And that's basically, our menu comes from Mexico City, Cuernavaca, that's my hometown in Mexico. So we try to serve as authentic as we can. Well, the most popular are tacos. We sell tacos more than anything on our menu. But my favorite is called alambre, which is a combination of chicken and chorizo. And we can also make steak and chorizo. And it's served with cooked onions, avocado slices, a roasted jalapeno, corn tortillas on the side, and obviously our hot sauce is always present in any of our meals. So that's my, I will say alambre is my favorite meal.
I love tacos, you know?
Motion to return into open session?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Thurms, seconded by Mr. Holston. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously. We are in the Katie Dorsett Council Chamber. Let the record reflect that all members are in attendance. As you can see, Tony Baker is here in for our city attorney, Chuck Watts, even though it says Chuck. Chuck is actually representing us in Virginia in a court case, which is why he is unable to be here this evening. We will begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence. And if we could keep the city of Charlotte in our thoughts and the horrible situation that they had to endure and the loss of many lives of our law enforcement officers. Thank you. I would like to recognize Boy Scout Troop 216 from Irving Park Elementary School. And would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And you can actually do it from where you're sitting if we would all just stand. Just start us off.
(Inaudible) State of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening. We hope that you'll find the meeting interesting. And I know that you are working towards one of your badges on, is it civic engagement?
Communications?
Oh, well, this is a great meeting to, to join us.
Maybe.
The city of Greensboro and the city council encourages residents' input. Public participation is the utmost importance to the city council. It is the goal of the city council that the Katie Dorsett Council Chamber is a welcoming space and that residents feel empowered to bring issues of concern before their elected officials. Individuals may sign up to speak to specific consent or business agenda items. The subject will be noted, and if it requires action or request, the city clerk and/or the city manager will notice such and provide steps for any required response or after action. The order in which speakers are called is at the discretion of the mayor or the presiding officer. Speakers must be signed up to speak by 6:00 PM. And if you have signed up to speak previously by email, you must check in if you are here. Speakers will be allotted three minutes each and may not relinquish any remaining time to another speaker. The mayor or presiding officer may at their discretion increase or decrease this time allocation. The city of Greensboro is committed to promoting an environment that is free of discrimination, bias, and bullying. Therefore, speakers shall refrain from personal attacks. The mayor or presiding officer has the authority to interpret and enforce the rules of decorum. In order to maintain a safe place for all speakers, members of the audience or speakers from the podium who intentionally disrupt the meeting, engage in egregious or repeated violations, or ridicule other speakers will be given a warning. And if unheeded, they will be removed from the meeting. That person will be suspended from in-person participation for three months. In order to preserve their right to free speech, they can attend virtually by Zoom, by phone, or they may submit comments by email. All electronic devices should be turned off or to the silent mode if you must make or receive a phone call. Kindly do so from outside the chamber. All speaker handouts should already have been provided to the city clerk or courier for distribution to council. Zoom participants shall mute their microphones until they are called upon to speak. All meeting attendees, including Zoom participants, are expected to respect speakers and council deliberations. By statute, council members must vote on all items unless there is a direct financial interest or if they sit on a board of a nonprofit receiving funding from the city. All votes will be moved and seconded, and the mayor will announce the vote total. We do have a consent agenda for items G1 through G13, which are grouping of agenda items that are voted on with one single vote to expedite what are believed to be routine and non-controversial items. Any council member may withdraw an item from the consent agenda due to a conflicted interest or for the process, for the purpose of voting no. Items removed from the consent agenda for discussion will be placed on the June 18th City Council Business Agenda. This meeting does include closed captioning. Depending on the length of tonight's meeting, we may take a short recess around 7:30. Now is the time for our ceremonial and presentation items. Item E1 is a resolution to honor the memory of the late Greensboro Police Department Sergeant Philip Dale Nix. Mrs. Abusawater?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas on December 30th, 2023, the city of Greensboro and the Greensboro Police Department lost an outstanding law enforcement officer with the passing of Sergeant Philip Dale Nix, while even off duty, still worked to uphold his values as an officer of the law. Whereas, as a native to Greensboro, Sergeant Nix was born on February 2nd, 1973, attended Smith High School, and graduated with an English degree from the University of North Carolina at Greensboro. Whereas bearing the Nix name, a name well-known throughout Greensboro and the state of North Carolina, Sergeant Nix was born into a long line of devoted first responders and public safety professionals within the Greensboro Fire Department. And Sergeant Nix stepped outside family tradition as he was the first to serve as a public servant with the Greensboro Police Department. Whereas the Nix family has provided a combined total of 157 years since 1971 of public service to the city of Greensboro, to the GPD and the GFD. Whereas Sergeant Nix began his career as a 911 telecommunicator, where he learned critical crisis response and de-escalation skills. Whereas he then joined the Greensboro Police Department with the 79th Police Basic Introductory Course, the PBIC Academy, in 2001. Whereas being identified early in his 22-year tenure with GPD, Sergeant Nix served many roles, including a financial crimes detective, a patrol corporal, a patrol sergeant, a police training officer, detective sergeant of the Family Victims Unit, served as a team leader for the peer support team, the assistant team leader of the GPD Honor Guard, served as a member of the United States Secret Service Financial Crimes Task Force, and the United States Attorney's Identity Theft Task Force. Whereas Sergeant Nix served on the Elder Justice Committee, the Domestic Violence High Risk Team, the Family Justice Center, the Family Justice Center High Risk Case Review Team, and routinely assisted with Friends Against Fraud, the Vital Signs Program, while in his role as supervisor of the Family Victims Unit, and the Alliance for Hope International Training Institute on Strangulation Prevention, where he also served as a faculty member, also a part of the huge Family Justice Center family. also a part of the huge Family Justice Center family. Whereas Sergeant Nix's expertise was recognized not only throughout the GPD, the community, but nationally due to his passion for serving victims of abuse and his exceptional collaborative skills. He was also nationally recognized as a leader through the National Family Justice Center Alliance and Training Institute on Strangulation Prevention, being invited to present on homicide prevention and intervention. Additionally, he was one of Guilford County's leading expert on non-fatal strangulation investigations and a longtime member of the Greensboro Police Officers Association. Whereas he was recognized within the department and awarded the Greensboro Merchant Association's Crime Prevention Award, the Department Superior Service Bar, and an Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate. Whereas while he will be respectfully remembered for his advocacy for domestic violence victims, his leadership in the GPD Honor Guard and Outstanding Officer, and multiple other law enforcement roles, he is also remembered as a loving husband and father who made family his priority, was protective, caring, dedicated, and purposeful, and as an attentive family man who enjoyed home projects, remodeling, and was an avid reader. Whereas the Greensboro City Council wishes to express its sense of loss and sincere appreciation and gratitude for the years of dedicated public service rendered by Greensboro Police Department Sergeant Dale Nix, the outstanding contributions he has made to this community, and the legacy he leaves with us all. So therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Greensboro that the council wishes to express its condolences and offer its sincere appreciation and gratitude for his years of devoted service to this community and his dedicated public service. His legacy as a lifesaver and difference-maker will be remembered by the outstanding contributions he made to the community, friends, colleagues, and family. That a copy of this resolution shall be delivered to the family of the late Sergeant Philip Dale Nix as a symbol of our gratitude from the people of Greensboro for his many contributions to this community. Madam Mayor, I would like to pass this resolution.
Motion.
Moved by Mrs. Abusawater, seconded by Mayor Protem. Council, please vote. And that passes nine to zero.
So I think I was the fallback in case the wife and father couldn't say anything. But I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Nix family. This really is touching for them, as you can imagine how difficult it is, not only for the loss of Dale to their family and the impact it has had on them, but the impact on our agency as well as the community as a whole. So I will say thank you. And if I could, could I please just have the employees of GPD stand? On behalf of them, thank you. Thank you.
I would just like to say for Kelly and Will and the whole Nix family, how much we appreciate the support, the outpouring of the community. It's just been unbelievable. I'd just love for everybody in Greensboro to understand what outstanding police department they have. They are the best. Dale loved them all and he loved his job. And I just wish all you guys and girls the best of luck.
Madam Mayor, can I say something?
Yes.
As the officers leave, I just want you to know how much we thank you for what you do. Certainly Sergeant Nix was somebody with special integrity and honor, but so are you, and we're with you. And I just want y'all to know that. Thank you for what you do every day for the citizens of Greensboro.
Yes, thank you. It's hard to move on to the next item after something so serious. We lost a really, really good man. The next item on our agenda is E2, which is a resolution to recognize Green Hill Center 50th Anniversary to be read by Mrs. Hoffman.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This is a resolution to recognize Green Hill Center's 50th Anniversary. Whereas in 1974, a grassroots group of artists and civic activists came together to create a nonprofit professional facility for visual art in Greensboro. Whereas the City Council of Greensboro unanimously voted in November of 1974 to assist in creating a public space for the Green Hill Art Gallery. Whereas in 1975, a building was purchased that became the Greensboro Arts Center, which included gallery space for Green Hill. Whereas bonds were issued in 1985 to expand the Greensboro Cultural Center, and the renovated center later opened in 1990. Whereas Green Hill Center has been an anchor tenant of the Greensboro Cultural Center and has continually thrived as part of our state's cultural community. Whereas Green Hill Center provides key arts education to the children of our community and state through Art Quest at Green Hill Studios, which opened in 1996. Whereas Green Hill Center remains the only nonprofit in the state dedicated exclusively to presenting and promoting North Carolina visual art, artists, and education. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Greensboro that the City Council wishes to express a sense of joy in recognizing Green Hill Center on this remarkable journey to its 50th anniversary, that a copy of this resolution shall be delivered to the Green Hill Center as a symbol of gratitude of the city of Greensboro for its contributions to the art and culture of community. Lee Dyer and the President of the Board are here, so I will...
So that was moved by Mrs. Hoffman, seconded by Mayor Protem. Council, please vote. And that passes nine to zero.
Really quickly, we really appreciate being a part of this community. We appreciate the fact that the city, both in the form of elected officials and residents and citizens of the city, has supported Green Hill for 50 years. We try to do our part to make it a better community, so we appreciate you joining us in that effort. We are support... And I also wanted to thank our Board President, Jamie Stone, for being here and being part of our support today. We are celebrating our 50th anniversary this coming Thursday. Councilwoman Hoffman is our honorary chair for that celebration. Of course, you as the City Council and mayor are invited, but we will be reading this proclamation at that celebration as well as we celebrate 50 years. So we thank you again for creating the Greensboro Cultural Center and making us a statewide hub for visual art. Thank you.
Lee, thank you very much. I've served six years on the Board of Green Hill. It's one of my favorite places. Ever since, I think, I've first walked in the door shortly after moving to Greensboro. So it's a special place and we thank you for all that you do for our citizens and what you contributed to this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E3 is a resolution to recognize Barraco Fuel 100th Anniversary. Mr. Matheny?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We often work hard to recruit new businesses. We work hard to retain businesses, but it's awesome that we can celebrate businesses that have been here for 100 years. So this resolution is to recognize Barraco Fuel on its 100th year anniversary. Whereas in 1924, W.M. Berry founded Berry Coal Company, which today is known as Barraco Fuels in Greensboro, North Carolina. Whereas the Barraco owners expanded their operations to the commercial market in 1960 through the development of Gateco. This aided in wholesale transportation of heating oil, diesel fuel, kerosene, and gasoline products to commercial customers throughout the triad expanded in a 100-mile radius. Whereas in 1981, Barraco partnered with S.H. Knight Oil Company Incorporated and Carolina Propane to form Carolina Fuels Incorporated, serving Rockingham County and the surrounding areas. And in addition to residential customers, Carolina Fuels is proud to be a strong supplier of fuel and propane products of farmers in their respective territories. Whereas Barraco continued expansion efforts with Alamance Oil Company Partnership in 1990. Alamance has become home to their motor oil and lubricants distribution warehouse in Burlington, North Carolina. Whereas today Barraco lives by their motto, "Always dependable." Fuel, propane, and motor oil delivery and provides reliable, top-quality HVAC installations and service to customers. Whereas Barraco is a large contributor to our local community, specifically founding the Gift of Warmth, supporting those who cannot afford heat each winter, raising over $75,000 a year with the help of Salvation Army. And therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Greensboro that the City Council wishes to express a sense of joy in recognizing Barraco on this significant milestone of its 100th year anniversary. That a copy of this resolution shall be delivered to Barraco as a symbol of gratitude of the city of Greensboro for this significant milestone and contributions to our community. And I move the item.
Second.
So I know we've got Will Berry here and I just, while you're coming up, Will, just want to say thank you. I know you've kept a lot of people warm throughout these winter months and also now cooling them and many other things. Thank you for your service and your commitment.
Just thank you to all the councilmen and women for this resolution and our community that's supported us for over 100 years. We couldn't do it without you. And we will be celebrating at the Downtown Greensboro Beach Music Festival on May 16th. Invite everybody out to the park and enjoy some beach music and as we celebrate 100 years. And again, thank you all.
Thank you. And that does pass nine to zero.
And we like your commercials.
Oh, goodness. You're making me blush.
Item E4 is recognition of the 2024 Water Resources Water Conservation Poster Contest winners. And I believe that Mr. Borchers is here.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. It's a privilege for me to introduce two of my staff members as we get ready to recognize some very talented students. And I tell you, they draw better than me. I can tell you that. So if I could ask, Lamitra Johnson, she is our Assistant Manager for People and Culture and Public Education for Water Resources, as well as Samantha Brown. She's our Public Education Coordinator to come up, as well as our students. If there is a student that has submitted a poster and they're here, if they could come up front, please. I'd like to have the audience take a look at all of your fine work. So thank you again. As they're doing that, thank you again, Mayor and members of council. This is, we're celebrating this week, the National Drinking Water Week. This is May 5th through 11th in the city of Greensboro Water Resources Departments in grades K through 8. And the theme of this year's contest was Be a Water Wizard. And the contest aimed to inspire youth to learn about the vital role of water for all of us and the importance, of course, of conserving water. Now, the contest has been on hiatus since 2019. And please feel free to hold up your posters so they can see. Very good. Thank you. So it's been on hiatus since 2019, but it has been reinstituted this year. And since 2000, there have been over 765 posters, poster entries for the city's contest. And staff within various divisions of the department judged all entries. And if a staff member had a child participating, they were not allowed to vote. So, from that standpoint. But there is a first, second, and third place winner for grades level K through 2 and also 3 through 5. And winners from Greensboro's contest went on to represent Greensboro in a statewide contest sponsored by NC1 Water. So it's my privilege now to hand it over to Samantha Brown as she announces the winners.
Thank you, Mike. And we're really proud of everyone who participated in this contest. And we'd like to see all the different approaches people took to water conservation. So if everyone will please place their posters down beside them and I'll call the winners for the 2024 poster contest. Okay. All right. And when I call your name, if you'll please raise your hand and Miss Lamitra will come and bring you your medals. So the winners of the Be a Water Wizard poster contest are as follows. For first place in Division, kindergarten through second grade, we have Benjamin Shu. He is the second grader from Greensboro Montessori High School, sorry, not high school. His teacher is Mary Jacobson. In second place in K through second grade, we have Carter Strawn. He is a first grader from New Garden Friends School. His teacher is Erin Alred. For third place in kindergarten through second, we have George Zheng. He is a second grader from New Garden Friends School. Is George here today? And in our third grade through fifth division, we have Jensen Arts. He is a fourth grader from Canterbury School. His teacher is Kelly Alley. For second place in grades third through fifth, we have Lily Gregory. She is a fourth grader from New Garden Friends School and her teacher is also Erin Alred. Okay. And our third place winner for third through fifth is Hannah Jensen. She is a fourth grader from Washington Elementary School and her teacher is Bianca Watkins. So congratulations to all of our winners. We really appreciated all your hard work and creativity in this contest. And we'd like to see all the different approaches you had.
Madam Mayor, can I get a picture with you?
Yes. And if everyone will please hold their posters back up for this photo, that would be great as well.
Maybe we'll see their work at Green Hill one day.
And one more note, winning posters are available on our website at greensboro-nc.gov/postercontest if you'd like to view them on there as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council.
Up to three minutes, and our first four speakers are Emily Sutton, Melissa Harrison, Jean Zwang, and Dr. Jennifer Platt. Emily and Melissa are on Zoom. And if the others could, as I call your name, if you could move to the window side of the room. Yes, we have her up on the screen. If you would just, what's your name for the record?
Sure. My name is Emily Sutton, and I'm the Hall River Keeper with Hall River Assembly.
Go ahead.
So hello, Mayor Vaughn and members of the council. I'm Emily Sutton, the Hall River Keeper with Hall River Assembly. We represent over 1,100 members in the Hall River watershed, including many in Greensboro and in downstream communities impacted by Greensboro's discharges into North Buffalo Creek, which flows into the Hall River. We have worked with Greensboro on many fronts. We were recently awarded as a 2024 Live Green Award winner by the city. Last week, I lobbied alongside your Greensboro Fire Captain, Vinnie Messina, to protect firefighters from PFAS exposure. We've also worked with your Stormwater Department to manage a litter trap where we have removed 2,012 pieces of litter from North Buffalo Creek just since it was installed last year. But tonight, I'm leaning on all of you as valued partners and asking you to direct your Water Resources Department to stop fighting 1-4-dioxide limits through the Ashboro Permit Challenge. This compound is toxic and has been listed as a probable carcinogen by the EPA. 1-4-dioxide has been a major problem for Greensboro in the past, but through a special order by consent, Greensboro was able to investigate and manage the sources within the system to minimize 1-4-dioxide releases. Shamrock Environmental and Lynx S were significant discharges of this toxic compound, but by using the existing authority given to the city through the Clean Water Act and your pre-treatment program, these industries were required to manage their own toxic waste streams. The polluting industries are being held accountable rather than downstream drinking water utilities footing the bill. Now that the special order by consent has expired, Greensboro is not required to keep these requirements on its own dischargers. Your wastewater treatment plant does not have a way to treat this, so the toxin comes directly from the industries to the plant, which makes it way to the Hall River drinking water intake in Pittsboro. My organization and the downstream communities we represent are very concerned that Greensboro will not act as a good upstream neighbor. Right now, the city is actively challenging the state's authority to regulate these toxins. And to make matters worse, the expert witness chosen for this case has widely been discredited for his toxicology science that has been funded by industry interests. Michael Dorson recently argued that the limit on PFOS should be 150 parts per billion or 150,000 parts per trillion. The EPA just set a drinking water limit of no higher than four parts per trillion. We will continue to advocate for PFAS and 1-4-dioxide regulations as they apply to the drinking water for Greensboro community members. We do appreciate that Greensboro has been a valued partner in our work, and we hope that we can continue to count on the city to value a healthy watershed for the city and for its downstream neighbors. Again, I'm just asking you to direct your Water Resources Department to stop fighting the 1-4-dioxide limit. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Melissa Harrison, and I am with the Southern Environmental Law Center. I am speaking here tonight because I am concerned about the Greens, what Greensboro is doing to fight our clean water protections, specifically protections against the toxic chemical known as 1-4-dioxide. As my colleague Jean Zwang will explain further, Greensboro's recent actions not only threatens drinking water for folks downstream of the city, it threatens protections for its own community. I urge the City Council to direct Greensboro to choose people over the industrial polluters that release 1-4-dioxide and to stop fighting the regulation of this toxic chemical. Thank you, and I would like to cede the rest of my time to Jean.
We, we do not cede time, so if you'd like to take the full three minutes, you may.
That's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean?
Good evening. My name is Jean Zwang. I'm a senior attorney with the Southern Environmental Law Center. I love seeing you all celebrate today, the kids up here and their beautiful posters. I think we can all agree how important clean water is for us and our children. So I'm here today to ask that you, Greensboro City Council, direct your Water Resources Department to stop fighting 1-4-dioxide controls, to stop fighting essential protections for your own drinking water source and for downstream communities. 1-4-dioxide is a toxic industrial chemical, and it's released by your wastewater plant into downstream drinking water sources. That pollution comes from Greensboro's industries. Your wastewater plant just can't remove it, so that pollution passes straight through. The chemical is also released into your own drinking water source by High Point's wastewater plant. So when your city fights protections against 1-4-dioxide, it not only hurts people downstream, it hurts your own residents. This isn't the first time you all have discussed this issue. In 2021, the people of Pittsboro came and pleaded with you. They talked about their children, their families, and the suffering that they have endured for years. But since then, you know, Greensboro had a special order by consent to address its 1-4-dioxide, and Greensboro reduced its pollution by 97% simply by addressing the pollution coming from its industries. So the city has shown it can address this pollution by using existing authority, and it's done so by having industrial polluters pay for that pollution, not, not by having the city pay for it itself or its community members. And that's the way it should be. You know, polluters should be the ones paying for their own pollution. But we're here today because that special order by consent has ended. And so for the past week now and for the foreseeable future, there are no 1-4-dioxide limits in place. And that's really scary because recently, your city has gone back on its word. And instead of protecting people, your city has been protecting polluters. By, first, by fighting protections in state administrative court. It's fighting North Carolina's ability to limit 1-4-dioxide and other toxic chemicals in wastewater permits throughout the state. It's relying on the testimony of a man named Michael Dorson, a pawn of the chemical industry who has focused on weakening 1-4-dioxide and forever chemical and other toxic chemical standards at the expense of our families and communities. And your city is also fighting 1-4-dioxide standards at the Environmental Management Commission. When the Pete's Bowl of Pittsboro were here last, you showed sympathy. Mayor Vaughn, you said you didn't want to see this happen again. Councilmember Hightower, you announce, you acknowledge how scary it is to not have clean water. And Councilmember Johnson, you said that you hope Pittsboro will have nothing but good, clean water flowing from your city. This toxic chemical can be kept out of our rivers and drinking water. Please do what is right here. Please direct Greensboro to stand down. Thank you.
Dr. Platt?
Mayor Vaughn and councilors, thank you so much. I currently teach public health leadership in the Gilling School at UNC. But I spent the first part of my career developing and running the Towne Carey's Water Conservation Program, and I was actually a mentor to your Christine Williams. So it's kind of sweet to see this tonight, the program, and how the city is still doing its work. So with this background in utilities, water quality, and three decades in the environmental field, it was with some trepidation but confidence that I could actually manage my exposures to PFAS when I moved from a well system in rural Chatham County to the town of Pittsboro six years ago. I'm so careful to avoid exposures. I do as many things as I can based on the current science. I have a reverse osmosis filter on my counter. I don't use Teflon pans. I drink out of glass. I, you know, track airborne exposures. I buy VOC-free products. It goes on and on. I'm a participant in the Gen X study, and I was very disappointed to see my first round of results from that study that showed that my blood levels of PFAS and others industrial chemicals were not only above the U.S. average, but above the study average. And in the second round of testing, my levels had tripled. So it's complicated. I was only on the town system for part of that study. But the point is, the pollutants don't go away in our bodies, in our waterways, in the environment. They've even found it in sea foam down in Wilmington. So people, I'm sure a lot of people here have kids, grandkids. What kind of world are we leaving for them? There's a lot of reasons to think about this, why Greensboro should continue to require prevention at the source. But here's the final one. Could I get a show of hands for those of you who believe in sound fiscal policy? Right? It's a good thing to do, right? Pittsboro got a $17 million grant from the state to, let's see, a state, North Carolina Division of Water Infrastructure for Phase 2 improvements at the Hall River Treatment Plant to treat contaminants coming down the river. So I would assert that for no other reason, it just makes good sense to continue the approach that you've already used in your special order of consent and continue to have the industries preventing pollution at the source. So I did a back of the envelope calculation. North Carolina and Greensboro, it's about $2 per person that is costing us
Thank you.
to get the grant.
Thank you.
that doesn't really make sense. Yeah. Thank you.
I know that Mrs. Thurm, and then after Mrs. Thurm, I'd like to get a comment from Mr. Baker or Mr. Borchers.
I just want to say that I met with the Water Department last week on this topic. And it's not that we are opposed to the regulations. There are things in that regulation, as it was handed down, that are very difficult, if not virtually impossible, the way the regulation is stated. So we are not fighting the regulation and the regulation of that comp, that chemical. We continue to do everything that we've been doing in the past with the manufacturers that create this as a byproduct. And it's something that we are very keenly aware of. And Mike, if you would, if you would please talk, talk through what you taught me about the situation.
And I, let me just say something before that. I know that we were one of the first to actually tackle this problem. And we have taken a very serious stance when it comes to PFOS and PFOA, and that there are many municipalities who came and actually to see what it was, what we were doing. And that goes back to Steve Drew's tenure, when this was just, we actually started looking at it before it started hitting the news. And I know that there were a number of articles that were written about Greensboro's stance and what we were doing to address water quality. And I'm going to tell you, I am a person who drinks more than 68 ounces of tap water every single day, so I am certainly very vested in clean water.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Thurm and, and Madam Mayor and members of council. And Councilmember Thurm is absolutely right. We have been extremely proactive. We have been extremely We have been extremely proactive as it relates to addressing 1-4-dioxide. Certainly, the special order of consent was an agreement that we had with the state as it relates to how we would monitor, educate, as well as address the reduction of 1-4-dioxide. It doesn't just come from industries, though. We have to remember that. It is in the environment. We heard certainly from one of the speakers as it relates to one of our upstream partners, High Point, the city of High Point. But I'd like to assure council, as I did Councilmember Thurm, we are committed, just like you heard, to working with the state ultimately on an equitable resolution and a treatment for, and basically addressing 1-4-dioxide. The cost is an element as it relates to it. And we did have a study done by Arcatis, one of our consultants. One of three options, they ranged from $100 million up to $1 billion to remove 1-4-dioxide from our wastewater treatment plant. So meanwhile, I understand that environmental stewardship is very important, and I completely agree. But there is a financial implication that needs to be taken into consideration. And it's our hope that when we meet with the state, and we have a meeting coming up with the state, DEQ, to talk about these issues, that we can find some common ground. But as you mentioned, Councilmember Thurm, we are committed to complying with everything that the administrative process leads us through, and ultimately, when they issue us an NPDS permit, complying with it fully.
Mr. Baker?
I think just to add what Mr. Borchers said and what Councilmember Thurm said, the, our corporate neighbors who are discharging, they have a permit with the city. Even though our SOC is expiring, that permit still stands. We are still testing their discharge to make sure that they're not sending us 1-4-dioxide and still have the ability to regulate those folks. So that is not going away, even though the SOC is going away. We're not simply opening the floodgates and letting 1-4-dioxide now pass through our system. Water Resources still remains very committed. And as Councilmember Thurm and Mike said, the petition process that's going on is just our way of asking questions about the administrative process. And we have valid questions. And when we get to an answer with the state, I'm sure Greensboro will do everything they can to comply with whatever that final regulation is.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Our next three speakers are Mark Hall, Rosando Felipe Jr., and David Hampstein. If you would move to the window side of the room? And if you would give us your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Mark Hall, and you, you know me, but you just don't know that yet. My name is Mark Hall. About eight months ago, I purchased a home in the Battleground Park area. I love everything about the neighborhood except one thing. There are two areas notorious for illegal dumping, Cotswold Avenue and Cotswold Terrace, Cotswold Avenue and Old Battleground Road. These two areas have become targets for anyone looking to dump unwanted household junk, especially furniture, and yes, guys, even toilets. Immediately after the city cleans these areas, thanks a lot to Hugh for that, cleans these areas, more items are discarded, usually within a day or two. It takes no more than a week for people to start dumping in the same areas again. I've even hauled away a few items myself because I'm ashamed of how it makes my community look. My purpose here today is to ask for your help in determining a way to deter this constant trashing of the neighborhood. Battleground Park is historic land honoring those that fought for our independence. Let's show our respect by keeping it clean. P.S., as I said, I want to give a huge shout out to Hugh Holston, Greensboro Councilman at Large. He's been amazing at helping me keep these areas clean, usually within a day or two after calling him. So super shout out to you, Hugh. Thanks for all of you for supporting our great city. Like I said, I'm loving it. I just don't like seeing trash every time I go to the local Walmart.
Mr. Manager, can we get the addresses of those locations? And would you see if it's possible to put cameras so that we can get the license of those who are doing that?
That would be fantastic. Thank you. I have intersections. Is that okay? Is that okay? It's not exact addresses.
Yeah, you would speak to Griffin.
Okay. Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I was getting ready to say, we knew Madam Mayor Protem have a program. Because you know, we changed, we increased our dumping ordinance a few years ago, a few years back. So we have cameras. We can move to various locations.
That would be a good thing because if it's consistent, as he's saying, you clean it up today and tomorrow, somebody's out there doing the same thing. You need to stop.
I would agree.
And I would say, Madam Mayor, and Mark, great to get your area cleaned up. Unfortunately, it is happening all across the city.
I know. I noticed.
There are calls that are coming in, and we have got to find a better way of cleaning up the entire city on a regular basis. A lot of this dumping, as we've said, is unauthorized dumping. It's not necessarily those tenants or those residents who live in right there, but those who are dropping in from outside of our municipality. So I'm very happy to make sure that all of our city is taken care of, as it should be.
Just one final note on that. I think a lot of it is happening toward the end of the month when people are moving out of their houses and their apartments. That seems, it's like the last week of the month, and that's when you see the toilets, the couches, the refrigerators, and on and on. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Yeah, we see a lot of eviction time first of the month. So yeah, we get it. We see it a lot. The gentleman back there in the back has a whole crew that will respond to you and get it cleaned up.
I appreciate the expediency.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Rosendo Felipe Jr. here?
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and City Council. My name is David Hampston. I live at 2304 Golden Gate Drive, and I help run the community bike shop at Barber Park. Just want to remind everybody that the month of May is National Bike Month. And as such, I hope people will watch out for each other on the city streets, try to drive safely, not just watch out for bicyclists, but pedestrians, people who are rolling along, and to watch out for each other. A lot of car crashes here in town. I also hope City Council will move as fast as possible on its traffic calming program. I hope you accelerate that process and tame the most dangerous city streets, including those with a lot of crashes and a lot of drive-by shootings. I also hope the city will no longer allow delays in badly needed sidewalks as they serve on the tack. I invite you all to the Annual Ride of Silence this coming Wednesday, May 15th, at 7:00 p.m. An eight-mile bicycle ride starting from the Coliseum this year. Normally, we start downtown, but we decided to do it from the Coliseum. The Annual Wheels on the Greenway will be on Saturday, May 18th. It was delayed because of rain. I also want to thank the city for allowing us to continue to run the community bike shop out of Barber Park for the past two years from an old brick building that's behind the Simpkins Sports Pavilion. It's a city building that we would like to be good stewards for. We really appreciate having it, having the use of it. It's still a city building. We would like city permission to raise funds for fixing the leaking roof and for putting a mural on the front of the building. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm sure that somebody will get back in touch anytime somebody says they want to help us raise funds.
I believe the city has already inspected the roof and is trying to put together an estimate on how much it would cost.
Very good. Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next three speakers are Precious Bradley, Cheryl McIver, and Kalisha Morris. And while they're making their way to the podium, I do want to recognize Sherri Allen. Sherri is with Ashton Clement's office, and she has brought a number of individuals from the Philippines. They are a fellows group who is here to see what public discourse looks like in the U.S. So if you would mind, if you could just stand and we could recognize you briefly. Thank you for being here.
Honorable members of the Greensboro City Council, good evening. I am Precious J. Bradley, a proud product of Greensboro. I am the owner of Precious Cargo Dula Services and the Executive Director of the Precious Cargo Foundation. As we approach Mother's Day and celebrate International Dula Month, I am here to share how my organizations are making significant contributions to our community, particularly supporting Black indigenous and people of color families during one of the most transformative times of their lives, pregnancy and childbirth. Firstly, allow me to explain what a doula is. A doula is a trained professional who provides continuous physical, emotional, and informational support to a mother before, during, and shortly after childbirth. This support helps significantly in improving the outcomes of the childbirth experience. Born here in Greensboro, my own life story began under challenging circumstances. I was abandoned as a two-week-old infant in 1991. My mother's decision was not one of a lack of love, but rather a lack of resources. This personal story, history fuels me, my passion for supporting expecting mothers through the Precious Cargo Dula Services. Here, we offer childbirth education classes, birth doula, and postpartum doula services. Our goal is not only to care for the newborn, the precious cargo, but also to nurture the mother with holistic products and emotional support, because we are all precious cargo. In addition to our for-profit services, the Precious Cargo Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, plays a critical role in combating the rising infant mortality rate in Guilford County. We provide essential resources to sustain and nurture infants in their first year of life through various programs. These includes monthly luncheon learns, volunteer services, community baby showers, and a human lactation support group called the Chocolate Milk Club. To date, we have supported over 250 families through these initiatives. This month, during our maternity drive, community members can contribute to our cause by dropping off donations at several locations, including Deep Roots Market, Transform GSO, Miko's House of M-Hotep, and Weaver Street Market. My ask of you esteemed council members is to consider how the city of Greensboro can further support initiatives like ours, perhaps through increased funding, partnerships, or simply by helping raise awareness about the critical roles of dulas in improving maternal health outcomes. Together, we can ensure that no mother in Greensboro feels unsupported during childbirth. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak today and for considering the essential support Precious Cargo Dula Services and the Precious Cargo Foundation provides to our community. Let's continue to make Greensboro a supportive place for all families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Kalisha Morris here? And while they're setting that up, our next three speakers will be Erendira Mendez, Brandon Dockery,
Mayor Vaughn, council, great to see you guys again this month. I'll start this by saying, city attorney, I heard that this was last left with your office in October of 2023. So I'll start with that. We have been talking about Amslay Court and that private road for two and a half years. So as you can see, the big pothole, this is in the middle of the road between Cracker Barrel and Lowe's. So currently, cars are stopping to allow another car to go by because the pothole is so deep that you really just, you can't drive over it, even with the SUV I now wait. This has been ongoing. Now you can see with the information that now the public is making funny comments, Greensboro's worst pothole. So this has been ongoing for two years. Now, we have done all of the legal work for you guys. And what I mean by that is we have informed you guys that this developer went bankrupt. We informed you guys that this developer was told by the federal district court that he had to sell his LLCs. Mr. Vaughn has over, I think, 21 LLCs. We have informed you guys that. We also informed you guys that part of the property that we were originally discussing was deeded to the city in 2003. We do see that that portion is now being maintained by the city. We also gave you the ordinance to which the city says that if there is a private road that has public access, that there must be an association to maintain that road. The state. State. Okay, state. With that being said, there is no longer an association, hasn't been. We let you guys know that. The road is not being maintained. We have informed you guys that. We have done all the research for the city. Our question now is, what is the city going to do about it? I mean, somebody has to own this. I mean, do you close the road? Maybe that'll get someone's attention? Can you force these entities and corporations to reform the association? It doesn't make sense to me. You got Cracker Barrel, you got Lowe's, you got Cone Health, you got Bojangles, you got Wendy's, you got Starbucks. Surely, they are either paying money to somewhere where they think that this is being handled or they're just ignoring it. So city, what are you guys going to do about it? It can't be filled in. This road has to be redone. It has to be repaved. So how are you going to help us, the public, accessing this private road that is no longer being maintained?
Thank you.
I'd like to ask the city attorney, what can we do? I mean, I could feel your frustration. I would be frustrated as well.
We have been working on this and working on this for, as Cheryl said, probably for the last two years and keep running into a dead end with owners not being able to be found and do the work. And so I think the question does become, how can we do something?
I totally understand the frustration. Obviously, it's very credible frustration. There are significant challenges for the city. One, this is private property. So the first question is, how does the city go onto private property to do work? The second question is, there are private roads all over the city that need maintenance. How do we repair this one?
Yeah.
Not take on repair others? And private roads are not always constructed to the standards of public roads. So there's some cost in bringing a private road up to public standard to take it over. But as mentioned, there are some very big-name companies that use this road and whose customers use this road and who are likely should have been or were a part of an association. Those companies have, I think, some motivation, probably from a liability perspective, to repair this road for the sake of their customers because it is a private road. That's very much a lawyerly answer. And I understand, I sound like a lawyer right now, but the first step is, it is private property. It's very difficult for the city to go onto private property and make repairs, again, keeping in mind all the other private property within the city that need similar maintenance.
Why couldn't we close it as a hazard?
I can certainly look into that, but there are state laws on closing public streets. Doesn't always apply to private property. We'd be closing some of the property.
I imagine if we closed that, they'd get it fixed pretty quick.
Well, they don't have an association. That's the problem. I've talked to Cone Health.
Right. I get there's no association.
Cone Health has an urgent care out there, though. They have an urgent care and a primary care out there in that shopping center space on that other side. And I've talked to Cone Health about trying to find the owners as well because they pay rent over there as well. And I think that's one angle to, for these businesses to understand that they won't stay open if we do have the authority to close the road.
Yeah. If there is another entrance, I would say, let's try to close it because that would make those companies come together and try to figure out how to fix it.
Can we file a complaint to force them to have an association and then force the association to do the work?
Absolutely. That's exactly. Exactly. The city should be contacting the state.
Right. That's what it seems like we should be doing here because without the association, they don't have any responsibility. So they need an association so we can then go at the association and force them on a private street to repair it.
But there isn't one. So right now, if we could close the street, that might make a bigger impact. So if you could look into that and get back to us.
Yeah, legally, it can be closed and close the street. I think that's the first part.
What's that?
And to talk to all of the owners, all the business owners.[1589.24] And to talk to all of the owners, all the business owners. There's Lowe's out there, there's Cracker Barrel, there's Wendy's.
It's right off I-85. Sorry about that, I didn't have the exact address. I just, you know, assumed everybody knows where it is.
It's off of Emsley, right there, by South Amity.
And, you know, just to follow up, if I may, just the fact that we've been working on it for two and a half years and we keep being told this with the city attorney's office and there's no movement, like, for us to do all of this research to bring it to you and still no response. It doesn't make sense to me. And I think, talking to the state, right? There's ordinances out there. And I would like to just plug, if I may, that this is one reason-
I gotta say, thank you.
Yeah, statute, thank you. And I also would like to plug that this is one reason why we have been discussing with council members about certain ordinances to hold businesses accountable locally.
Sure. Thank you.
So when you guys say it's going to be plugged, filled? [laughter]
I thank you for your time today, council members. My name is Erin Dira Mendez, also known as Cindy Mendez. Greensboro has been my home for over two decades. I'm currently serving a Faith Action International Agency that serves immigrants and refugees. And along that, I'm also a DACA recipient, DACA recipient, a dialysis patient, and a mother of two beautiful U.S. citizens, citizens that see Greensboro as their home as well. Today, I'm here because I want to address an important matter that is a big concern of our community, is House Bill HB10. This bill possesses significant risks to our city and its residents. This bill seeks to mandate that sheriffs work with Immigration and Customs Enforcement, also known as ICE, threatens to undermine our community's trust in local law enforcement and disrupt the balance of local priorities. Allow me to highlight some key points of why this bill is problematic. It's going to interfere with local decisions. HB10 mandates some compliance with ICE detainee requests, even though these requests are voluntarily under federal law. By compelling sheriffs in jails to hold individuals for 48 hours after they would otherwise be released under state law, this bill interferes with our community's ability to set local priorities and use of resources effectively. This unfunded mandate places an unnecessary burden in our local law enforcement agencies. We also have constitutional concerns. This bill provisions allowing a state judicial official to issue an order to detain an individual at ICE's request. Conflicts with federal law unlocks proper training. This approach could lead to groundfull detentions of U.S. citizens and expose our city to expensive lawsuits due to potential constitutional violations. Impact on local resources. HB10 forces local jails to act as enforces of ICE, requiring them to investigate the immigration status of every person brought to jail for specific offenses. This "show me your papers" requirement wastes local county resources, forcing our sheriffs to do federal government work without any reimbursement. It undermines our ability to focus on local priorities that matter most to our community. It's going to also affect, and one of my biggest concerns, the ripple effect of public safety and trust. By mandating cooperation with ICE, HB10 is going to harm the trust between local law enforcement and our community, especially among immigrants, their family, and neighbors. The lack of trust make it harder for victims of crime, including domestic violence survivors, to come forward, undermining public safety and making our city less secure. I want to highlight that the bill also fails to say how they're going to protect victims of crime that are going to come forward. I just want to end it with, we say Greensboro is a welcoming city. What are we going to do to prove that we are a welcoming city regardless of your status? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, I have a question, and I saw that she just read, and it says sheriff. Does it impact our police? They have to, so it's only the sheriff? Because I was seeing-
I think it's mainly the sheriff's department, which you should also speak to Guilford County Commissioners.
Well, maybe Trey can address that.
Yes, Councilwoman, you did hear correctly. The bulk of it does have to do with sheriff responsibilities. However, I think there are many more components that we provide here with the city, and it will impact our law enforcement activities. So I think it will be good, I will get with the chief. Also, our international coordinator has been engaged with some folks as well, Jody Stanley. So I'll put together some, more of an information sheet for you all so that you can have it and be prepared for different questions. But I will say to the speaker, and I know there are others that will address this concern, it is a concern overall, not just for our law enforcement side, but for the people in our community. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much. Unfortunately, our community does not know the difference a lot of the times of sheriffs and police department. Thank you so much.
The county commissioners meet on Thurs? Is it this coming Thursday or next Thursday?
Yes. I think it might be this Thursday. Thank you so much.
I would go bring it up.
County Commissioners, you want to go over and speak to them?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But, yeah, I would like to know, Trey, how that's impacted, because I asked that question a few years ago about something we were doing. So, it was, so.
Mr. Dockery?
Hi, I'm Brandon Dockery. I've been a Quaker pastor in Guilford County and Randolph County since 2009. I am the interfaith program manager for Faith Action, and my supervisor, Ms. Cindy Mendez, asked me to speak on behalf of the religious community since I work with about 70 of our religious partners in Greensboro. And since I only have about two minutes left, I'm just going to tell you a quick story. One night, I was leaving a funeral home, and I was going home to our house at that time, which was on Providence Church Road, which is in Level Cross, a little forgotten town in Randolph County. And it was raining, and it was dark, and I was a pastor, a seminary student, and a young father didn't have any money, and my car broke down right there on Providence Church Road, a mile away from my house. And I get out, and I thought, half the people on this road know me, I'm their preacher. I won't be out, I won't get whipped for a second. An hour later, two pastors I know and a police officer, an off-duty cop, passed me and kept on trucking. They said, Brandon, we'll see you next time. A truck I didn't know stopped in the rain. He got out, he didn't speak any English, but he said his name was Hosway. And he had a tow truck, and he towed my truck to his house, and he fixed it. I can't tell you what was wrong with it because he couldn't tell me what was wrong with it. He didn't speak much English. But he didn't take a dime for it. And being a pastor in that community, I knew about him, I knew about his family, but I couldn't communicate much. So when I thanked him and I left, and about a year later, about 2012, 2013 maybe, 2013 I think it was, the bill passed, giving police officers the right to pull over people and ask them for their papers. Now, the bill didn't last for about five seconds till the courts threw it out, but it lasted long enough for my friend to get deported. The only man to help me out got deported. Bam, didn't have the right paperwork. I just ask nine of you to speak truth to power and tell them this bill is not Christian Jesus, is nowhere near this bill. This is anti-Jesus. Jesus said things like, suffer not the little children, but let them come to me. Didn't say anything about locking them up in detention centers because they don't have, they're not, they don't have the right paperwork. Let your conscience be your guide, and please make a lot of noise about this bill for people who can't. Thank you, and I yield my time.
And then, well, this address is coming up, our next three speakers will be Toad of the Mountain, Malik Hugh, and Michael Smith.
Good evening, City Council. Hello, my name is Ariselli. I am a registered nurse, thank you. I have been working in the community health now for the past three years. I see HB10 becoming a disservice not only to immigrants and refugees who are looking to access medical service and programs also who, I'm sorry, I see HB10 becoming a disservice not only to immigrants and refugees looking into accessing medical services and programs, but also to anyone in the community who lacks a valid form of ID, including persons experiencing homelessness, community members re-entering society, and members of the LGBTQ+ community. This bill would lead to racial profiling, discrimination, and mistrust from the community when interacting with law enforcement and primary care service providers. Having access to programs such as a Faith ID, a program that has fostered relationships with law enforcement, service providers, and underserved communities. This program allows patients to enroll in basic health necessities such as nutritional programs, the orange card provided through GCCN, and the Cone Health Financial Assistance. Having access to the ID allows them to choose a medical home instead of flooding emergency departments for non-emergent matters. If the emergency departments are flooded with non-life-threatening cases, it takes away time, resources, and funding that could be better allocated. So thank you so much for your time, and also shout out to all the nurses who work in this profession since it's National Nurses Week. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could say that in my reading of HB10, and I realize that it's not necessarily the purview of City Council, but Assistant City Manager Trey Davis said it so well, that there are so many folks in our community, in our city, who are going to be impacted by this, whether it's broad and maybe unintended impacts, whether it's economic, whether it's educational, whether it's safety, or even health. And again, I know that City Council doesn't have purview here, but I myself will be personally calling my legislators, my state legislators, to let them know how I feel about HB10.
Thank you. Before Toad begins to speak, I do want to recognize an old friend of ours, Eddie Brewer. You probably remember Eddie from way back when with the homeless union. He's a little clean-shaven today. So Eddie, welcome back. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before, I feel bad calling you Toad, Mr. Toad speaks. Trey, I just got a text from somebody that said, the hose and detainee at jail have nothing to do with GPD. So we really need to be clear on this. This is all on sheriff department. So I just want us to be real clear, because I'm very concerned.
Yes, ma'am. You are, the law enforcement duties are largely related to the sheriff, but I think some of the other, like our welcoming city, some of our efforts to support our international community, like our IC, which is very robust, all of you have supported through the years. I think it will be healthy for us, I'll get with the manager, to ensure that you all are equipped with a roll-up sheet. But Councilwoman, you are correct, the actual law enforcement decision does rest with the sheriff.
With them, right, with the sheriff.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Thank you, sorry about it.
Toad here, homeless extraordinaire. Look, I know you guys like to feel proud, like to give yourselves credit whenever you give money to the cause of homelessness. Regency, 3.9 million, and they housed a grand total of zero. I'm really hoping that you guys can recoup some of that money back, but it's part of a bigger problem. I mean, you can call it ineptitude, or you can call it corruption. I think it's both, and I've always said it's both, on all these levels. You've been, for the past 12, 13 years, you've basically given control of the homeless population to one person. And I'm not going to name names, I know you don't like that, but she was a former director of the IRC, then became a city councilperson, then became a city manager last year, and now I can't remember what the hell her position is. And the problem's only gotten worse. What does that tell you? That you need to try different things, or that you need to look past the people you've already, you've already given, you know, all this money to? You need to take direct control of these things. You cannot keep relying on third parties because it's not working. I mean, you're wasting money and money. Like, even when the regency was still on, they had a goal to, what, house a tenth of our current population, current population, in four years. That's ridiculous. I mean, seriously, take control of it yourself. That's the only way we're going to fix it. Housing first, harm reduction. Look into buying the regency yourselves. Screw these third parties. Guys, be safe.
Thank you. Malik, before you speak, is Michael Smith here? Then after Malik, Susan Brown, Esther, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name, Esther, and Christina Hopner.
Hey, City Council, I'm back. I had a long little vacations. I've been in New York and stuff, been seeing out the transportation, seeing out some of my homeless shelters out there in New York. I was out there, I was sort of looking at some things for, bring back for my city so that way I could have new ideas for my city, because my shelters out there, I loved it in New York. I was in the shelter. I was in an LGBTQ shelter out there, and I loved it. I was having so much, I met so many people out there. And me getting active with them, trying to get to know my city a little bit, know New York, and just, you know, be around some of the people. But mainly, I wanted to bring this up. The transportation, the depot in Greensboro, I've been talking to a lot of the customers, a lot of the people who host in, thank you for talking to me earlier. I seen you, Zach, I seen you at the park today. I want to come to Maine, too, because y'all two been there, y'all been there back-to-back. Y'all been there trying to get these homeless, trying to figure out what we do. But my question is, and I brought it up to Zach earlier, and I don't know, Zach, if you can, what I said, but today, I brought up this, that they are trying to move the IRC, and I heard a couple of things about the other ministries trying to move to Wendover and trying to make some new place for us, for the unsheltered community. And I feel like the unsheltered community shouldn't be having to deal with this so much. And I feel like we got food, we got places, we got one little spot that we can all connect to. And I feel like we need to be in that one little spot downtown Greensboro, because I know y'all want to expand us and push the unsheltered out of the community area. But I feel like, me being an advocate for my unsheltered community, I feel like they want to stay where they are, and I don't feel like the IRC should move. I don't feel like I'm fighting to stand the grounds for my Greensboro, and like I want to do is stand for the IRC. The other ministries, I want to stand for people that's in my own community. But what we need to be looking at is these crime rates that keep happening, doing so much, I've been looking at the statistic rates, and I want to ask y'all this, can we get the old Walgreens location on Random Row? And if y'all can look into that and get back to me on that, and just look at that, because that's where I want to try to see if I can make it into a shelter spot, the old Walgreens location. And I feel like that's where we can start, we can start expanding to other Walgreens locations that are sitting there, the buildings are just sitting here, empty. We need to use what's claimed empty, and I feel like it need to be looked at in different ways, different options, whatever we can do to make that place a better place for us to sleep at. Being out there, y'all can see it, it's sitting empty. I have the pictures, my phone just died. So I have, like, spots that are being looked at. I've looked at several different locations. Who hosts in, you can even drive by and you can see it, it's sitting there, waiting to be just taken over. Thank y'all.
Thank you. And Christina Hopner?
May I, if I could check and make sure you don't mean Susan Burkholder?
That I don't mean what?
Susan Burkholder?
It says Susan Brown.
The sign-in says Susan Burkholder, so I'm, and it's doubly confusing to me because my husband's last name is Brown.
Well, I, there's only one Susan on the list, so we'll go with you.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you, thank you. So good evening, Council. My name is Susan Burkholder. I learned about the Keep Gate City Housed campaign when C.C. Crawford of the American Friends Service Committee came to talk to the Quaker meeting, where I am an attender. And I have to confess quite embarrassingly that I had not thought enough about eviction and the eviction process with respect to homelessness before hearing C.C.'s presentation. So much of the work around homelessness, which I have been engaged in, in part myself, is after the fact, is when folks are already on the street. And so this perspective of naming eviction prevention as homelessness prevention, just like, yes, it just made so much sense. I was motivated to go to Eviction Court Watch, which C.C. hosts on a weekly basis, and it's one of those experiences where the statistics come alive for you. You know, you hear that 16,000 households, at first I thought, no, I learned tonight, 16,000 households in the county got eviction summons in 2022. How many people does that represent? When you hear the numbers, it's like, and go to eviction court, now the numbers take on names and faces and situations that are a stark reminder of how hard life is for folks who are living on the edge. Fortunately, another thing I learned about and saw in action was the TEAM program that I hope you all are familiar with by now. I saw members in the hallways, members of TEAM conversing with folks who were there attending eviction court, offering assistance and information, providing support for those going through the eviction process. As you know, we are looking, we are asking for TEAM, we are asking for funding to help TEAM go full-time. With the funding they have now, they can only be a part-time presence. We want to be able to reach more folks in this situation. It's not just the right thing to do, but it also makes good business sense when given the societal costs of homelessness. Back in the mid-'80s, before my family moved to Greensboro in 1988, my husband and I lived and worked in a shelter for homeless families for two years in Stockton, California. So we witnessed close up the brutality of homelessness and the situations that lead up to it. So the stories that I heard here in eviction court were not new to me, but now, they are the stories from my community. They are the stories of residents of my community. So I ask you, urge you to fund full-time TEAM program as one solid step towards reducing homelessness. Thank you.
Esther, could you pronounce your last name for me?
Sure. My name is Esther Jokpe.
Thank you.
I am a mother, a community advocate, I'm a homeowner, I'm a landlord. I am a mother, a community advocate, I'm a homeowner, I'm a landlord. And I'm here tonight to express my support for Keep Gate City Housed campaign. When individual or family are forced out of their houses, they are more likely to land in unsafe housing condition and they can become homeless. And when I put my scientist cap on, it is way cheaper to prevent eviction than to fight homelessness. So let's do the math. Let's try to keep people in their houses. So I have been eviction court watcher, and let me share with you one case that stuck out to me. One hardworking family father came alone in this cold eviction courtroom, and obviously, like me, didn't grow up with English language as first language. And everybody in the room noticed he's not getting what the judge trying to tell him. And it is down to me that in 11 days, he can be forced out to his house with the entire family because he didn't turn in an appeal that can buy him some time. That's the situation we face with. Luckily, on that day, in the hallway were TEAM table with information, and only one person was sitting behind the table. So obviously, they have language barrier. The information have one page English and the other page Spanish. So I hope, I try with my hand, my feet, everything I have to communicate, but language barrier prevented me to get in the bottom of a situation. Unfortunately, TEAM is only two days out of four on that hallway. So I'm here tonight to ask you, to beg you, expand the TEAM program so there can be four days, all four days there. Will you all put it in the budgets? And will you vote yes to expand the TEAM program? Thank you.
Thank you. After Ms. Hoffner, Sadie Lansdale, Denden Girmay, and Casey Thomas.
Can you hear me? My name is Christine Hoffner. I'm a renter and eviction court watch volunteer, supporting Keep Gate City Housed. Homelessness threatens renters going through a temporary hard time, putting them at risk of losing their homes, and they need assistance. City Council can take an effective and low-cost step to help prevent homelessness for people facing eviction. And as Susan Burkholder spelled out, this is a lot of people, 16,000 households. So even though it's only part-time, the TEAM program that Esther was just talking about has provided legal aid to help renters stay in their homes or keep their records clear of evictions. For example, having an attorney is helpful because many tenants aren't aware of the difference it can make to get a continuance in their case to keep the record clear. They also don't know what information to present that may avoid a judgment of possession, and don't know that a judgment of possession against them makes it harder to find another landlord willing to rent to them. In court, I heard tenants explain that illness or job loss interrupted their income, putting them behind in their rent. So it's easy to see that anyone in that situation wouldn't be able to afford a lawyer to contest their eviction, though having a lawyer is a huge benefit. But at its current level of funding, TEAM can't help all the tenants who need the legal aid it provides. If a tiny fraction of the city's budget is directed to TEAM, that will provide attorneys to significantly improve chances for tenants to stay in their homes. Keep Gate City Housed is asking City Council to budget $440,000 to increase TEAM's assistance to tenants facing eviction, to make it a full-time program. This small investment against homelessness and disruption of families will make a big difference for renters in difficult situations. So I'm asking, will you vote to support budgeting $440,000 to help keep thousands of people in their homes? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm the Reverend Sadie Lansdale. I'm the minister of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Greensboro, and I'm a supporter and participant in the campaign to Keep Gate City Housed. Maybe you know that old story about villagers who saw babies floating down a river and began to frantically pull all of the babies out. And the babies kept coming, and they pulled them, and they passed them, and they swaddled them, and they kept pulling them. And finally, someone said, "We really ought to go upstream and see who's throwing all these babies in the river." I know you to be upstream thinkers, and from downstream, let me tell you, it's not great. My Unitarian Universalist faith calls me to put love at the center of everything that I do and to see the work of love being done everywhere. You heard about 16,000 evictions, 16,000 households, households full of love and people who deserve to be treated in a loving way, sent packing in 2022. Now, my congregation, like many, has a small assistance fund, which people in the church and the community can access if they need help paying a bill, medical bills, cars, payment stuff, getting to work on time, rent, what have you. The increase in requests is being so, is just so dramatically outpaced by what we in the congregation can raise and what we can offer. We make these offers, though, because it is our obligation as people of faith to act in a loving way. And most of what we see, a lot of my congregants are here tonight, most of what we see is downstream, and we are begging you to act smart upstream. I heard the gentleman before speaking about an increase in dumping sites, noting that at the end of the month, this is when those things happen. These are people whose lives are being dumped, you know. And I heard him speaking from a place of love and pride in the place where he lives. I've sat with my people in court watch, holding our breath, our hearts breaking together, watching people be turned out of their homes, people who love each other, who love their neighbors, people who deserve to be loved by their neighbors and by their city. We've seen legal aid lawyers, paralegals, all the good people at the TEAMS project working hard to keep people in their homes, you know, working hard upstream, acting out of love for our city and the people who call it home. So we ask you tonight, will you also follow the call of love? Will you join TEAM tenant? Will you commit to putting 400, wait a minute, $44,000 in the city budget for the TEAMS And will you all vote yes to approve that budget recommendation?
I will.
Thank you.
I just want to say, thank you all for talking to us. I have spoken with some of your folk, and I'm very impressed and very happy and very excited about what you do and what you can do, and with some money, what you can do even better. So I'm going to support that.
I plan to hold my comments until all the speakers have spoken, but... During our strategy session that we had over at Bennett College, that was one of the things that I brought up, that the best way you can stop homelessness is keep people in their homes. And that a few years ago, we started a pilot project. We invested with UNCG and Legal Aid, that was right prior to COVID, and there were good results. They have got, they have got good guidelines, what we can do to keep people in their homes. And we talked about that it was people who really had something episodic, a health issue, a loss of a job, a major car repair, that were just thrown off their budget and they needed help before they were put on the street. So we did talk about this at our work session, and I think everybody was supportive of adding money in the budget to help us with eviction diversion, recognizing that diversion is the best thing that we can hope for to keep people where they are. So I want you to continue talking, because I think we all believe in the message, and I believe that there will be some funding in the budget for eviction diversion, because that goes along with our housing plans. So thank you for, thank you for coming to speak. So we have Casey Thomas, followed by Anita Washington, followed by C.C. Crawford.
Hi, I'm Casey Thomas. I live on South Josephine Boyd Street in Glenwood, and I have the misfortune of going after the preacher. But here we are. I am here because of the 16,000 folks who keep getting faced with evictions every year and that we've been talking about. And that number was jarring to me, but I'll believe it because I live in Glenwood, and it's just not uncommon to just see piles of people's belongings on the curb, like you see their clothes, their furnitures, children's toys, pieces, just their lives that they can't take with them when they're kicked out. And Cornell University just released a study that found that in mid-sized cities in upstate New York, that there was a strong correlation between evictions and crime, and like an uptick in evictions and crime. It's making it not safe for people. And I know we're not New York, but the same study, similar studies came out of Ohio, Pennsylvania, and Boston, so this is a thing that's affecting a lot of people. And it destabilizes the community, it makes our neighborhoods less safe. And I want to live somewhere safe, I deserve that, I think we all do, yeah? I'm a homeowner, and I saw the tax bill go up as the home prices skyrocketed, and it stung a little. But I'm someone who's willing to pay more if it meant ensuring that every renter in Greensboro had a fair shot if they're ever facing eviction. Hopefully, though, because we're asking for well under like 1% of the city's budget to protect tenants, it won't be necessary. And someone who enjoys going downtown, we all see the growing amount of people who are experiencing homelessness. And as you said, Mayor Vaughn, one of the most important things that we can do is prevent it. And so I didn't come here to ask you guys to support the TEAMS program, because I think that everyone here just believes the same things politically and will have the same policy agenda and solutions. But regardless of where we are on different issues, I don't think anyone up there would have run for city council if you did not believe that Greensboro deserves better. No? And that we can come together to make things better for our neighbors. And so I'm asking you to champion fairness, to be champions for the tenants who live in all of our neighborhoods, all of our districts even, and for the 16,000 people a year who are faced with eviction, half of whom don't need to, because when the TEAMS program reduces evictions by 51% when people have it. So I'm asking, Mayor Vaughn, I know you said you wanted to support it and increase the amount of funding, will you all commit to the $440,000 request to put that in the budget so that we can be there all the days?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, everyone. My name is Anita Washington. I've, can you hear me? Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Anita Washington, and I'm used to seeing everybody on TV, and you all look great in person. Thank you. So I'm here with...
She can have extra time.
So I'm here with Gate City Housed, and I'm the face of eviction. When I came here, I moved to Greensboro from Fayetteville. I graduated from Fayetteville State University, so I came here. I like Greensboro. I moved into a rental here, and I asked for some repairs to be done, and the eviction process began. It was a long haul. I was in court every month. My landlords are the Agapians. I rented a house from them, and I finally got out. But what I'm asking today is, I would have never avoided eviction if I didn't have legal assistance. The legal aide came into court with me, she showed me the process, she helped me, and I got out. So today, I'm so happy, because I've already, I already knew that, I already know that everybody understands how important this is, and I already believe that everybody is on board to vote yes on the money we need to help individuals who come into court facing And we also need money for rental assistance. Not everybody that needs rental assistance doesn't work. Sometimes you just don't have enough. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. After C.C., we have Jason Hux, Ronald Harris, and Lisa Everhart.
So my name is... Okay. Oh, thank you. My name is Cecily Crawford. I am the program director for American Friends Service Committee. I am a homeowner. I am a mother of girls trying to find housing that they can afford, and I am an eviction court watch observer. And I want you to, in this moment, imagine sitting in court, facing an eviction. I want you to think of how you would be wondering how you ended up in that situation. You spent the last couple of weeks scrounging up everything that you could on your rent because you got sick and had to take non-paid days. You took another day from work to be in court, and you kept your children at home because you weren't sure that you'd be able to pick them up on time. Unfortunately, now, you owe late fees, admin fees, you owe court filing fees, you owe court costs, and a mountain of other debts. You have to go to the bathroom, you've been there for hours, but you don't dare get up because they might call you and you lose your home. Luckily, in my situation, it resulted in the landlord taking the money that I had and the judge not charging me with those court costs. But very little has changed. We go weekly on Wednesday afternoons to observe and watch what has happened to others. I don't think people understand that any of us can find ourselves in that seat, alone with no lawyer, wondering how things are going to shake out so that you can keep your roof over your head and your children safe. See, when I go, I see people who are feeling the same frustrations that I did when I See, when I go, I see people who are feeling the same frustrations that I did when I was there. It's hopeless, and 90% of tenants don't have lawyers, while 90% of landlords do. You've heard about the Team project, so I won't talk about it again. But I want you to know that people in Greensboro agree with us. We have over 600 signatures. The pledge card is in your folder. They all believe that the city should invest $440,000 to expand the Team program and support the almost 50% of Greensboro residents that are renters. It is said that you can tell what a city finds value in by what is in its budget. We need you to add this funding to the budget and vote yes. We would like to have you speak with our delegations from the city. Thank you, Mayor Protem and Hugh Holston. And we would like you to come to eviction court and see for yourself.
I think that is the final speaker we have with that group. Was there anybody else in that? So, there were some that are just written for housing. And I have Ronald Harris, Lisa Everhart, and Evelyn Smith. If, if I have not called your name and you think you signed up to speak, please check with the courier.
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Smith. I'm a long-term resident of District 2, 35-year resident of Greensboro. Last night, I got a surprising and upsetting phone call from a friend of mine. She's a high school math teacher in the Guilford Public School System. And she'd just been talking with one of her students that day, who told her that after last night, she had no place to sleep. She and her mom and two siblings have been staying with a family friend, and the friend said, "Today's the day, you're out." And she has nowhere to go. This situation has broken my friend's heart, of course. This young student is one month away from graduating. And now, what's, what's going to happen? She has been incredibly strong, my friend says, even though, and has been a very successful student, even though she has been only a step away from living on the streets for quite a while now. So, the question is, now what? What happens when our threadbare safety net runs out for families like these? When they have exhausted the help from family and friends who are often struggling financially themselves? And when the nonprofits in our community that want so very much to help people avoid homelessness are being tapped for needs that they can't possibly meet the demand? Matthew Desmond is the author, I don't know if any of you have read the book, excellent book, called Evicted, Pulitzer Prize-winning study, where he documents the tremendous upheaval that happens with evictions. You know all of this. It includes students dropping out of schools, people losing jobs, crime in the communities, poor health. Being evicted, says Desmond, is a cause of poverty, not just a condition of it. And it destabilizes and strains the very social fabric of our community. But with the housing crisis that we're facing, there is hope, if we have the will to let our city budget speak to our, for our convictions, that every person deserves a safe, dignified place to live. I'm asking you to fund the efforts that we've spoken of tonight, that have been proven to work in other cities, to keep people from becoming homeless, such as the legal assistance with the Team program and the rental assistance. Again, from Matthew Desmond, "A good home can serve as the sturdiest of footholds. Let us give our neighbors and friends the foothold of a good home on which to build a life, and to increase the stability and well-being of our community as a whole." Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I believe, I believe that was the final speaker of this group. Have we missed anyone? Okay. Mr. Holston?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm going to state that I am in strong support of the inclusion of the $440,000 in our city budget for fiscal year 2025. And I really base that on a, on a variety of reasons, but just some stats first, and you may have heard them before. But the city of Greensboro has been ranked seventh in eviction rates in the nation. We've been ranked sixth worst, and that's seventh worst in the nation. We've been ranked sixth worst in the dollar increase in rental rates in our nation. Here in Greensboro, our poverty rate within the city is some 20%. Out of 578 counties that have been surveyed nationwide, Greensboro has ranked 195th most vulnerable in an economic downturn, should one occur. No other county in our, in our state has been ranked that way. And you heard earlier about the 16,000 households who are under threat of eviction, either now or in the future. And that's really where the challenge is. We talk about the needs of our community, but there are also those unmet needs. And as many of you know, I lead the Greensboro Housing Coalition, and we see this instance every day, of those folks who, who call us and who are just one step away from eviction. And that eviction isn't just leaving the home, you also have to consider the impact to the children, who may have to move to a different side of town, different schools, different friends. It's really detrimental. And so, the evictions, what we're talking about here is a fair representation. It's not a hookup. This is not some kind of extra thing that somebody's getting that no one else has. It really is just following the letter of the law. And a lot of these residents do not have, as you heard, some 90% currently do not have legal protection, or legal representation. And this simply provides them that representation, so that there's someone standing with them to help them understand. They, they might still be evicted, but at least they'll have someone with them to help them to understand the process, to help them to understand the timelines, the appeals processes, just being fair. It's about fair housing. And so, so Madam Mayor, I am in full support of, of this endeavor, because someone said it earlier, that it's much easier to keep someone in their home, and to keep them from being unhoused, and keep them from having their lives disrupted terribly. And this is one of those pieces. It's not the complete piece, there are many other pieces there, but this is one piece to get, to keep people in their homes, so that they can have the dignity of the home, their families can have the dignity, and they can contribute, can continue to contribute to our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I have talked to a few of the members of this group, and I told them they were supposed to sit down with me, so that, you know, we could really fully understand everything and make sure $440,000 is even enough money. But I would agree that if we can prevent evictions, it's better to be proactive than reactive. And so, because we spend thousands and millions of dollars paying rental assistance, and I think we can stop doing some of that if we keep people housing and help them change their socioeconomic status as well, so that they improve their lives. But I would like to ask the city manager, because we are getting ready to go into our budget discussion, to look at our budget, and look at the funds, and see where we would pull this money out. We've got some housing dollars, I think, that could go to this. Sometimes we spend money for the same old thing with the same old people, and we need to do something different for a change. So, as we go into our budget talks next week, I would like for you all to look at that and bring that to us. Just to let everybody in the audience know, our budget, we don't have it, to have it until the end of June. So, I don't know what their, what your timeline is for these funds. But if you're talking about putting it in our budget, that budget wouldn't be beginning until July 1st. And so, hopefully, I hope that would be something that would be able to help at that point. But I would like to ask Mr. City Manager to look at that and see where those funds could be derived from as well. So, because I get too many phone calls about, "I need help with my rent, paying my rent," too many, you know? And where's the money? Well, we don't know where that money is, we can't find that money. And welfare reform liaison's on the agenda tonight, and they're the ones that's been doing the emergency rental. And they ran through that money like you wouldn't believe, because of the people and the need. So, I, I think we have to support the program, and I certainly do. I'm glad to hear more about it tonight. But I always knew in my heart, this was something that we should be doing, because I think, as the mayor said, we talked about it a few years ago, doing this, so. So, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I do want to say that, you know, of course, we had the rental assistance program, and also through the Human Rights Commission and the Human Rights Department, we have had the Tenant-Landlord Dispute Program through UNCG, working with them. And also, there is an eviction mediation program. So, I just wanted to make sure that you all are aware of those, and people can work together and, you know, figure out a way where we can all, it's, it's not going to be just one group or two groups, it's going to be not only your group, but all the other groups coming together, because this is something that I think is bigger than all of us. It has been rampant, the evictions are, you know, overwhelming in our city and our counties. So, I just want to make sure that there is some collaboration with some of the other groups and things, so everyone can help and be on board. So, thank you all very much.
I think we've been in discussions for months, and I've talked to the leaders, and I think you know that I do support, and I said from the very beginning, because of the problem that we have, and when the program, the Team program was explained to me, I said to Cece, "Yes, I agree, it should be expanded." If we, the budget season is here now, and we haven't decided on exactly what it's going to be, but I think you've got the vote of all of us up here. Everybody's not saying, we all are in support, we're all in support. And so, you know, you'll have to wait until the final thing, until the final budget is done, but believe that we realize what a problem it is in our city, and if we can prevent, that's what we want to do.
And, and Madam Mayor, just one more point, and regarding the, the budget and our assistant, or our city manager, in addition to the eviction funds, what I also see on a daily basis is that once, once our residents go through the eviction process, there are times when there are some funds that are needed to help them get out of that hole. Sometimes it's just $350, maybe, it's $205. But if there also are some ways for us to, in addition to the eviction funding, also to provide some rental and utility assistance, that would be very helpful also. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Holston, you bring up a good point, and I would challenge you, and maybe you have this planned already, to walk across the plaza, well, it's a little hard right now with all the construction, but get across the plaza, and, you know, the, the county commissioners, they are doing their budgets now, and, you know, they are responsible for health and human services and other things, and often, they get a pass. People don't go and really ask them for things they need. So, I would, I would say that I think it, it appears that you have got unanimous support here, so I think this, this is, the interim city manager has heard the message, and I think he'll include that in his budget. I think you can feel good telling the county that maybe they should match our funding.
Mayor, I think, Mayor, I think, Mayor, I think, Mayor, I, Mayor, Mayor, I think they get money, had they have gotten some funding from the county already. And so, they have been asked, they were asking us to match what the county had done, has done for them already.
Well, go back and ask for more. Thank you. So, our, our final three speakers, our final three speakers are Jason Hicks, Ronald Harris, and Lisa Everhart.
Good evening, Council. Jason Hicks, downtown resident. I'd intended to come speak about the lack of diversity, creativity, and culture downtown as a resident, but as a renter and as a community organizer, I'm moved by the organizing that I've seen. And I've only heard two people express that they'll support this $440,000. And that's not enough, you know, there needs to be a majority.
There were more than two people.
Well, no, no, I mean, who said that they would absolutely support?
You can't hear.
You know, and there was two. I mean, unless I'm crazy, which some of you may think I am, but I only heard two.
There were more.
Okay, well, we'll go back to the other then. That's fine.
Don't waste your time on just-
Yeah, so we'll go back to the other, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, Zach Matheny is, is where we're at, my best bud there. So, you know, my, my thought is this, there's an RFP right now for the management of downtown, no secret, you know? But I think that it's, it's clear that downtown is not a reflection of the community, and, and you can see that by spending time downtown. But I, but I think that it's, it's really due to the lack of leadership at DGI, and the lack of transparency from DGI. So, I would ask, you know, that as this contract comes, and as it's finalized, that you guys subject DGI, or whoever happens to end up managing that contract, allow those meetings to be open to the public. Because the issue is that there's no room for, there's no avenue for public input downtown, there's zero. And I can say that because I live downtown, and I can't tell you when DGI meets, I can't tell you what goes on in those meetings, and furthermore, there are issues downtown, and I can't, I, I have, you know, I, there's a parking issue right now, where I live downtown. Not a lack of, but as a resident, I don't have anything that says I'm a resident. So, my neighbors have been given parking tickets. I can't call Zach for that, and that's not because I dislike him, that's because he's useless. And I think that the, the reality is, we, we need to move past this, this, this notion of complete lack of transparency. You know, there, there is nothing at all that is transparent about DGI, other than the fluff numbers at the state of downtown, you know, which even the city attorney said was a joke, in, in our conversation that we had the day, the day of the state of downtown. You know, those numbers are fluffed up, so that's my deal. The only other thing I'd mention is tomorrow, you know, you mentioned going across the plaza, I would encourage you all to go across the plaza in the other direction, and go to eviction court from 2:00 to 3:00. Thank you.
You know, I, on another note, I would like to talk to you about the court watch that you're doing, because Mary Kay and I have been doing some court watch and first appearances in courtroom 2C. We are trying to get more people who would be interested in looking at what happens at first appearance, and to make sure that people are held accountable. So, if there is a way that we could join forces, I would love that. Thank you. We have Ronald Harris and Lisa Everhart.
How's everybody doing this evening? Benach, I talked to you three weeks ago, in Greensboro, I work part-time at Greensboro College here, Prep Province. I talked to Ms. Johnson, Ms. Wales, and Ms. Hightower. I talked to Ms. Johnson, Ms. Wells, and Ms. Hightower, my main man Hugh, my main man Zach, and I don't know the other ladies, but yeah, yeah, Ms. Miss Thum too, I talked to you too. About four months ago, my girl Lisa Everhart was in the hospital. Since then, things done got worse. And now she told, um, she told Liz to put us in the motel room together, which we did, and everything worked out, but things have got worse now. She's been in RCA, her inside, her testis is, is, is burning, I mean, it's sizzling, you understand what I'm saying? But she just had a, something like a breakdown just now, we was ever sitting down, she was here, she, she out there now, and uh, her sugar went back down again, but it's, it's bad for her to see her in the I.C.R., that, that, what she had now on that floor, her stomach condition she in. I work part-time, I don't, I don't really make no money. Some people just don't know how homeless is. I've been there, done that. Some people don't, don't know what homeless, homeless people are, and I'm one of them, and I'm a victim of it, you understand what I'm saying? But like I said, people talk about homeless people all the time, but they just don't, they just did, it's hard as playing. Just like I told you three weeks ago, Nancy, when I seen you in Greensboro, at, at that event down there, you talking, when you told me to bring it to the council meeting, when you down at, at that meeting, you remember that, three weeks ago, at Greensboro College Center, when I seen you on stage, when you come off? You know, I'm, I'm saying Ronald Harris, you know what I mean? But anyway, like I said, I work every day, part-time. I can't take care of my girl like that. Is any way possible y'all can help her get out of the RCA, to get, get some rest in the motel or something? She, she, she can't even sleep at night. I go over there at night, and sit in a chair all night long. For the past two, three months, that's what I've been doing. And we, and, and, and the S.I., they still ain't gave her no, no, no house or no house and nothing, they ain't gave me no house or nothing neither. I went through the whole program, through the federal halfway house, when I got out last year, also twenty, uh, 28. I still haven't heard anything. What I got to do to help? I told Mr. Hugh the same thing. Friday, when he come up to the park, he seen how my girl was in pain. But what about I do that for? I mean, we done went to everybody, the doctors at the hospital are saying, they can't do that, you know what I'm saying? She need to go to another hospital. I wish you'd had a recording, but she didn't, you know, I just told him, worry about it. Anyway, the doctor told me, if y'all need his verification or anything, call Moses Cone or call Wesley Cone, she's been in the hospital eight, nine different times. Each time, they bring her back out. She can't even, how to walk up, ask that young lady over there, she'll tell you, and you ask you, she can't even how to walk, but they got her sleeping on the floor, because we homeless. We ain't, we ain't got no help as far. You know what I'm saying, Zach? We just ain't got no help, man. Is any way possible y'all can help us out, any kind of way?
I will tell you, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about the I.R.C. later tonight.
All right.
Good talking to you today.
Yeah, but y'all take that consideration, man. That floor is not good for a stomach, man.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wells, Ms. Johnson. You remember me calling you, Ms. Johnson?
Is Lisa Everhart still here?
She's outside. She had, she almost had a breakdown, had to sit down, she had to eat, her sugar went down.
Okay, so she's not going to speak? She, no.
She's, she's outside.
So, um, according to what I have, um.
She got all the paperwork with her though, from, from dollars and everything, in her pocketbook. Let me go out, she can not get it?
I'm, I'm having trouble understanding.
She's got all kind of paperwork in her pocketbook, stacked like that right there, from the hospital.
What, what, I don't.
Zach seen it today.
What are you, you saying that something is not going right at the I.R.C.? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying by her sleeping on the floor, by her condition of her stomach.
So she's sleeping on the floor?
She's sleeping on the floor, and then.
He's trying to get help.
The pain she got, the pain she got is eating her stomach up inside. She got the paperwork, everything.
It's so crowded, there's no place hardly to get on the floor at I.R.C.
They, they, they have a mess up there. They are full.
The place is full.
Okay.
I know, but I'm telling you, I'm, I'm telling you. I've been going to the I.R.C. on Sunday mornings, I've been going there. I go to the I.R.C. to do Sunday school lessons.
Goldie, can you put your mic on?
It's on, it's on. I, I've been going to the I.R.C. uh-huh, for months now. Now, I was there uh Sunday morning, every Sunday that I go, there's a new crowd of people. There are few that are there every Sunday, but there are new, there's a new group. And Sunday, it was raining a little bit, so there were, on the outside, there were inside, some sleep, some on, you know, the heads on tables. It's, it's a, it's a real scene, you know, that, and they, they, there is not enough room, but we don't have an answer. We don't have a place. I work with the Welfare Reform Liaison. We spend thousands of dollars every week for people to stay in hotels. It's a major, a major problem, but it's not that we don't care, but we just don't have an answer, we don't have a place, and money goes really, really fast when you put people in hotels, and they stay there for a night or two, and then the money's gone. So we, we have real problems with homelessness, and I just want people to know that we care, but we, we just don't have all the answers. We don't. And uh, and every Sunday, I pray that the Lord will protect that facility and protect those persons and protect them from sickness and, and confusion. Some of them have mental problems. It's, it's really, it's really something. So I, I think somebody else needs to put it on their prayer list too, and we can do as much as we can do, but it is a real challenge.
You're right. Um, let me just say, there is one speaker who was miscategorized for item I2, but she was actually a speaker from the floor, Stephanie Samuel. Stephanie?
Goldie, we'll talk more about that in a little bit, because we have let a lot of people down over the years, but I'll, I'll, I'll save those comments.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it in a little bit, because I think we really do need to talk about city's business.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Hi, thank you for having me. Um, again, my name is Stephanie Samuel, I live here in Greensboro in. My, again, my name is Stephanie Samuel, and I live here in Greensboro in a city, a single-family home. My reason for being here this afternoon is to request an ordinance that would prohibit anyone from placing their trash, yard waste, and recycling containers at another homeowner's residence for collection. This is a personal issue for me. I have two neighbors who constantly bring their containers from across the street and place their containers for collection on the side of my house. I had, I have asked them both to stop numerous times and to place their waste containers at their property instead. One homeowner responded, telling me he will put his containers where he wants to, and he will continue to place his containers at my house. He also stated, why are you so concerned where I put my garbage? I should not have to put up with someone's garbage generated at another location and placed at my residence for collection. If these containers have improper garbage in them, and if a summons needs to be issued, the summons will be issued to my address because the containers are placed at my address for collection. I have two containers from the city of Greensboro for my single-family home that I requested. I asked, why do I have to have eight containers out for collection at my single-family home, and six of those containers do not belong to me? I have researched ordinance from other states that I found that have similar issues to this, and example of one that I found is improper disposal. A person may not use another person's receptacle without permission, or place his or her refuse in front of a premises other than the building in which he or she reside or works. Please consider an ordinance for this, and again, I thank you for my concern, for listening.
Ms. Samuel, um, in your letter, you say, is there anything the Homeowners Association can do? So you are part of a Homeowners Association?
Yes, I live in a development for Homeowners Association. In 2018, I wrote them a, a letter and an email in regards to this. From 2018 up until October 2023, they told me, they were working on it, they told me to continue to send them monthly updates on what's going on. I've been doing that for the longest, and come to find out in October 23, they did absolutely nothing. They told me that I had to go another route.
Well, it seems like the Homeowners Association is the quickest route.
And that's what I thought, and I went through them and they didn't help me.
Um, and you know, one thing that you might be able to bring up to them is what you just said, as far as having other people's trash in front of your house, which could leave you open for a, a fine.
She's talked to them, she's actually had conversations with them. She's talked to them. And the reason she, the reason she's here tonight is for us to consider uh this, maybe a possible ordinance or something that would address that. She's gone to the HOA, she's gone to them for five years now.
Yes, not longer.
And, and yeah, we, we kind of went back and forth about HOA, but they're telling her that if there's something in black and white.
Right.
And then they can address it. I don't see why they can't address it in their bylaws. That's what HOA does.
And I think if we could provide, um, Mrs. Samuel with the, with the ordinance, um, and possibly an opinion that it could leave, um, homeowners open to fines, um. If there are, if other people's trash are, I, I would like legal anyway to take a look, because it would be, it would be a lot easier having it done through the HOA than trying to do a city ordinance.
And I have been reaching out to Chuck about this, so Chuck is aware, Tony, Tony may be aware too. So I've, I've asked them to look into this. I, I, she, this house is on, her house, you're not on the corner, you're on the corner.
I'm on a corner property. He's on a corner property, and the other guy is next to him, and they come across the street to bring their garbage.
Because they want to park their cars in front of their house.
I get it, I get it, yeah.
That's the problem.
And then put it across in front of her place. So.
But, and one of them has a corner property like I do, he can put his garbage anywhere he wants to. It, it's in the pictures I sent, I took a picture today of his house, and um, he has just as much space as I do.
Right.
And again, I've been dealing with the HOA forever, and they're not helping me. They're not helping me at all.
And so, um, Griff.
I would just rode it right back across the street.
Well, well, you don't want to get into, too, she's a single lady by herself, so you don't want to put her in there, but Griffin has, had, Griffin has addressed, has been at the, I, I, I don't know how, if he could talk maybe with the HOA company himself, and so wanting to make sure that, that that would be something that, because Griffin, who's already talked with Ms. Samuel.
Who is your HOA?
It's Gramercy Park, all I could find was Gramercy Park.
Well, that's the name of the development. Red Rock just left about a month ago, and now is.
Who's gonna be?
A.S., A.M.G., I believe it is, on Friendly Avenue?
And they're a local company, so it might be, because I see Red Rock's out of Charlotte, so um, yeah, call, call A.M.G., and they might be able to, they might be more responsive than Red Rock was.
Okay, but wouldn't they have the same bylaws that I have, that I got from?
Yes, ma'am. It's District One, she's in Gramercy Park.
But you're just asking for them to be amended to.
Okay.
Yeah.
She's in Gramercy Park, she's.
All right, so that is our final speaker.
Thank you. We'll find out, we're gonna.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
That is our final speaker from the floor.
Thank you.
Um, we do need to take a quick break, um, if we can try our best to keep it to 10 minutes.
neighborhood toolbox? Did you even know there's a neighborhood toolbox where you can borrow tools to use on your house or on your lawn for free? Larry, how did this program get started?
Well, technically, the program got born out of need, especially for, around the community with people who couldn't quite get their yards mowed or the maintenance that's required to keep your yard in compliance with the city of Greensboro.
And so someone came up with the idea, well, if we have tools to lend, then that can be less of a problem, we can make these accessible to everybody.
Yes, our director, Michelle Kennedy, wanted to promote a program, or we could offer tools to help the community. So with that being said, the Neighborhood Toolbox program was born. We kind of did a, quite a bit of community engagement with community watch groups, HOA to kind of put this out there to let them know there is a, a place to be able to get help.
So this started in 2023, summer of 2023, basically, and about how many people used it?
Roughly right around 300 people last year, and we're anticipating a little more this year.
Right, so a little earlier start this year and get the word out, and, and what kinds of things are you lending?
Our most popular ones are pressure washers, lawnmowers, and weed eaters, but as you can see, we have shovels, rakes, uh, vacuums, anything that you'd need to keep your house in order.
What do you like about this program?
That it's free. You just stop by, tell us what you need, and if we got it, we're gonna let you borrow it for a week, and you can bring it right back to us.
That's a pretty good deal, I like free. Do you like free?
Yes, ma'am.
So Mark, how does the program actually work in practice?
Well, the way this works, if a customer would like to borrow something that we have, they can go on to the city's website and go to the toolbox page, they can find a list of the tools that we do have. They can also click on a link where they can fill out an application if, if they see something that they'd like to borrow. Just a few questions, and then what tool they want to borrow, um, what particular day they'd like to pick it up and bring it back, uh, and then one of our staff members will call them, make arrangements, and tell them what day and time that they can show up and just pick it up.
It sounds like a pretty simple process. How's it worked so far? Did it go pretty well last year?
It, it is a pretty simple process, and we had a pretty good response. We were really pleased with the response. In fact, we had between 200 and 300 applicants last year. We couldn't help everyone, uh, certainly, you know, pressure washers are high in demand, we only have so many.
Right.
So that's, that's a little difficult, but uh, we were talking to another program in Texas, and they said the first year, they only had 100.
Oh, wow.
So I, I think we did really well.
And so, and I know people are thinking, did the, the tools actually come back? And did they come back in working condition?
For the most part, yes. We, we, we had a couple of incidents, but nothing that can't be corrected.
And stuff happens, things break down and need repair and need some, a little love every now and then, that's for sure. What do people tell you, you know, customer or neighbors, when they are able to check out this equipment and use it and, you know, get their lawn and their, or their, fix something around their house?
It ranges from disbelief, what, I, really, I can do this for free?
Right.
It doesn't cost me anything? No, that's just what it's here for. Um, and then a lot of gratitude, you know, I wouldn't be able to do this if I didn't have this option. Uh, this really has made a difference for me. Uh, when someone's lawnmower breaks, and they may not have the money to have it fixed right away, but they want to maintain their lawn, for instance, you know, it's there for them. Or if they don't want to buy a pressure washer, they only need it once, yeah, there it is.
How would you like to see this program grow?
Well, I'd like to see it expand as far as a list of tools that we have available. What we have now is pretty basic, um, but I'd like to see what we have grow, and ultimately, it'd be nice to have a brick and mortar, you know, just a, a fixed location where we have, um, a place where people come inside, a place for us to do maintenance, um, that would be nice.
How does it make you feel to be a part of this program?
I've really enjoyed it. Uh, I've been in code enforcement for about 20 years, um, and it's been frustrating when you find a customer who doesn't have access to something, and you wish that you could not just serve the notice of violation, hey, your grass is really tall, you have to do something, but if they don't have the money to do it. But if they don't have the money to do it, it's nice to have that option.
You're offering solutions.
Trying. That feels really good.
Want to find out more or check out a tool, go to greensboro-nc.gov/toolbox.
The following segments are pre-recorded and sponsored by Longworth Productions.
Back now on the special edition of Try Today as we salute some of the folks that work behind the scenes in the city of Greensboro to help improve quality of life for everyone. And one of those folks that does that day in and day out is our special guest, first time visitor to the show, Reginald Mason. And he says, some people call him Reggie, so I don't know. You want me to call you Reggie?
Reggie's fine.
All right. He says his wife calls him Reginald when he gets in trouble. Reginald Reggie is Director of the Transit Department for the city of Greensboro. I'm so glad you're here. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here.
We thought before we started taping the show that you're originally from Houston, but aside from that, tell us a little bit about your background, how you came to be here.
Well, I've been working in mass transit well over 25 years now. I've worked in Chicago, Houston, Phoenix.
Baltimore, wasn't it?
San Francisco, Baltimore, and Atlanta.
Yeah.
I've worked both on the private side as consultant and on the agency side.
Yeah, with all that experience, and I'm thinking, gosh, Chicago and Baltimore and all these big cities, some people would say, well, gee, you know, what drew you to Greensboro?
Well, what drew me to Greensboro was really, you know, this current city manager, Tola Joe, but he has a vision for the city of Greensboro and mass transit. And as I looked at the job and the Go Borrow Plan, which was rolled out recently, it really piqued my interest in coming to Greensboro. And then I applied for the position, of course, was hired.
Right. So you're, so are you saying sort of that your vision sort of aligns right with the city managers?
Yes, it does. Actually, it really, really does when it comes to mass transit and how we want to grow mass transit, not only just in the city of Greensboro, but in the region to help with the economic development and employment hubs that are moving to our region.
You mentioned, you dropped the phrase on me a second ago, and I think I interrupted you, but you mentioned the term Go Borrow.
Yes.
Now, does that have anything to do with the kind of long-range vision you're talking about? Explain what that's all about.
Well, the Go Borrow Plan is a long-range transit plan. What we're looking at essentially by 2045, the city of Greensboro being car optional. And with this particular plan, when it was introduced, we introduced two concepts, a ridership concept and a coverage concept. And with that plan, with the ridership concept, it's more frequent service throughout the city and access to jobs and more, you know, doctor's appointments, shopping, things like that. Which when I say frequent service, I mean 15-minute service on the majority of our routes.
Right.
On the coverage side, that would expand our service throughout the community, but still would be a similar type service that we have now, which is folks more access to jobs and more frequent bus service.
And that's the key to everything in it, Reggie, is that access, because that can be a barrier to people.
Yes, it is.
Trying to get jobs, to healthcare and everything, right?
Yes, it is. That's a, that's a big barrier right now. Because our current system, we call it a hub and spoke system, where all of our buses go into the depot. This system has been like this essentially since 1946.
That's right.
So we need to make some major changes in mass transit to improve how we get folks around the community.
You know, some folks could be watching this and listening to you and say, well, that's fine, Reggie, but you know, what does this really mean to me as an individual? How can I support what you're trying to do, what your vision is, or can the community help support it?
Well, how that can help is, you know, right now, like I said, with the Go Borrow Plan, we're going to be, we had a consultant that went out and did surveys for us in the community. We received over 700, 1,700 respondents, and they were all positive, you know, about which concept we should use, ridership and our coverage.
So you're getting input from people?
We get input from people. And also, you know, to do this, you know, we would have to go on the ballot to get a transit tax to support the growth of mass transit.
I got you. So when that comes about, you're going to need everybody pulling together.
We're going to need everyone pulling together because, you know, right now, you know, there's a phrase that the American Public Transportation Association uses, it says, as public transit grows, the community grows.
Absolutely.
And what they mean by that, it brings in a lot more economic development.
I'll tell you what, you, I just think what you're doing is great and I'm glad you're on the job and have that vision and everything. I want to put it up on screen before I forget, greensboro-nc.gov. It's the general website, which we'll keep reminding folks about throughout the program. Reggie, thanks so much for what you're doing and I'm glad you're here and doing it.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
All right. Will you come back sometime?
Yes, I will.
All right. For all of us here on Try Today, I'm Jim Longworth. We'll see you next week.
Welcome to the city of Greensboro's budget process. Let's learn how our city government prepares its annual operating budget. A city budget is a proposed plan for how we will raise and spend money throughout the fiscal year. It determines the city's property tax rate and is a critical task that shapes the future of our community. In Greensboro, about 40% of the city's revenue come from sales and property taxes. Another 30% comes from user charges such as water, parking fees. The remaining funds come from various sources, including state and federal government grants. A little more than 40% of the city's expenses are for personnel. It takes some 3,300 people to support all the city's operations, from police to parks, waste collection to water service. The budget also covers operational costs, such as materials for treating our water supply and fulfilling potholes. The city also sets aside funds to pay down its debt, supporting the 10-year capital improvement program, which plans for more expensive projects like new buildings, fire trucks, and stormwater improvements. Here's how the city of Greensboro budget is developed. By law, municipal governments in North Carolina must adopt a balanced budget every year. The city's fiscal year begins on July 1st, but budget development begins months in advance. In the fall, the city's budget and finance officials begin reviewing forecasts to help look for changes in the economy that may impact the city's funding sources. Over the winter, city departments review their work plans for the coming year and submit service enhancement requests. These are essentially requests for additional funds to add new services or employees in the coming year. During this time, the city council also meets to establish its budget priorities, which it expresses through policy decisions, budget guidelines, and recommendations. These priorities represent council members' values and aspirations of our community. And they are the guideposts, the city manager and budget office.
All right. Yeah, they don't even bring it anymore. All right, if I had a gavel, I'd be using it right now. No, I told them, stop bringing it. Yeah. I mean, Angie, it's been 11 years. Never used it. All right. If you would return to your seats, please. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
So moved.
Sharon, is there something you want to remove?
Yes, ma'am.
Which item?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you have a quick question or do you want to vote no? Boy, that's a moral dilemma.
Madam, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hightower.
It is.
Councilmember Hightower, could you turn on your microphone? We couldn't hear what item you were discussing.
Well, she's debating about G2.
Right, because it is to close Phase, or to add to Phase 3 of the landfill, but then the MWB, my MWB numbers are so low. Why the M is so low, I do not know. I don't get real good information anymore. I really don't know what's going on. MWB officer feel totally out of the loop here, and I'm the liaison. But I am concerned about this item.
Well, Sharon, I don't think you want to be marked down as a no.
I know.
Yeah, so.
I know, that's the thing. I know, that's a dilemma, but.
Do you want to remove it or?
No, just leave it. I'm a vote for a percentage.
Any other item?
Move the item.
No.
Moved by Mr. Holston, seconded by Mayor Protem. Council, please vote.
Madam Mayor, who motioned that?
It was Hugh and then Mayor Protem. And that passes nine to zero. We have no public hearing items tonight. General business item I point one is a resolution approving change order number two for 1,400,000 for the management and operations of transit service agreement with Rapdev USA Inc.
Move the item.
Moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Mr. Holston. Council, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. And then our last item on the agenda is I point two, a resolution authorizing commitment to multifamily affordable housing development projects.
I have a couple of questions, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we have a move by Mayor Protem, seconded by Mrs. Thurm. Mrs. Hightower, you had a question?
So, yeah, I'm very concerned about this item. You know, I understand it's to do commitment letters for two projects. They can get lit tech tax credits. The one, the Yanceville Place one I get, but the one, the affordable housing, the one, Vandelia, says bond money and home money. And my question is, where did this home money come from? And I asked this question, I don't think I ever got an answer except for it said 2016. Last time I sat in this seat, well, not the last time, but the time before, we went back and forth about bond money. And Zach wanted to give AHM all the bond money just to sit there until if they were going to, you know, request tax credits. And I disagreed and we didn't do it because we said, we were told by someone who said there are other housing projects out there. But this bond money has not been being used. Now all of a sudden, it can be used? There's some concern for me because there's some other projects that have been trying to get done and can't get done, just for a simple million dollars. But now we find bond money for this? I just think we find it for what we want to find it for. And we've been really sitting on this bond money for the last year and a half, two years since we had this whole discussion. Is that all we do is just hold on to bond money in the event that a developer does decide he wants to apply for a tax credit? I mean, and some of this money too was for housing repair. And that housing repair piece bothers me because we closed the housing repair program, we stopped taking applicants, but we had, because we got a long waiting list already. If we got that money, why aren't we using it to help these housing repairs that are already out there waiting? People been waiting pre-COVID and even now on this housing repair list, which means their houses are going further and further into disrepair. But yet we're taking this housing repair money and putting toward this project. I don't understand the logic behind that.
Well, and I neglected to say, we do have three speakers. Do we have our Zoom speaker as well? No, so we have two speakers who have been very patient. Do you want to answer Mrs. Hightower's questions and then we'll go to the two speakers? We have Beth McKee-Hugur and Bobby Funk. If you'd come to the window side, but could you answer Mrs. Hightower's question first? Somebody?
I'll ask ACM McCray to go over some of the information that was provided. You may not have been able to see it yet, Councilperson Hightower. And then if there's specifics beyond what she provides with regard to the allocation of funds, I'll ask Cindy or Anna to help.
Yeah, I think I got some text message, but.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So Councilwoman Hightower, the initial application period for the home repair program, as you referenced, it did close in January of 2024, and that was due to the high volume of contacts that our staff received at the time that we're interested. And that was about 250 or so. We paused on taking information so that way we could vet through those applications. The first pool that we have received that we've determined to be eligible for that program, there was about 75, and we're currently working through that process now. Several repairs have already been completed through the program, but also through Duke Energy and Community Housing Solutions Repair Programs, which are some of our nonprofit partners. We also have about 25 that are going through the LED and CDBG-funded LED Safe GSO program. And so to your point, the item tonight is requesting to propose roughly $150,000 from the 2016 bond allocation to the Vandelia Acres Project. That would still leave some sufficient amount remaining in that 2016 housing bond to serve the remaining home repair households that are in that initial cohort of the 75. So future home repair application cycles, we can address that through the 2022 bond allocations. And if the Vandelia Acres Project is not selected for NCHFA for funding, then those funds that we would set aside if approved tonight, we could return those to the home repair program and continue to service additional homes.
But why, why, why close it out? Why are we closing it out? When we ran into COVID and there was housing repairs, we stopped taking applications. We said, okay, we're not letting people go into people's houses. So we did. So those people that were on the list wait. Now other people, when we changed the housing repair program, that more people started calling. Then we shut the list off. Then we stopped. Why are we not helping the folk? We have a program to do home repair, housing repair. We want people to live safe. And we have an opportunity to do that with the funds we have. Why are we taking the funds away and putting it somewhere else and say, well, if we don't use it, we'll put it back? Why take it away at all? That's, that's a concern for me. I'm sure all these projects are needed. Yanceville Place, Vandelia, everybody would talk about quote unquote affordable housing. Yeah, and we talk about preventing eviction so people have somewhere to go, certainly. But how about the people that are already in their houses? What about them? So now they got to wait again for more repair, for us to open up or get some more money when we got money already here that we could be, we should have kept this home repair thing going. Why would we close it off? And yeah, there's, you know, PTRC that may do some weatherization and, and all of that and LED programs, absolutely. People go to Community Housing Solutions all day long. Yes, they do. If they, if they have the capacity. But we talk about having this home repair program here. It was redesigned so if people got those dollars, they would have a way to be able to repair their homes, live safe in their home. We also talked about, hey, there's minority contractors out there who we could be using in the home repair program. We could get them done. We just talk. We just talk. We don't do it. I don't understand it. It's frustrating. People call, I hear from people who say, I saw your housing repair program on TV. Can I, can I find out, sign up for? And then I call and they say, oh, well, we closed the application period. But we got money. I don't understand that rationale. Somebody needs to help me.
Councilwoman Hightower, this is an.
Councilwoman Hightower, this is an initial cohort. There will be future cohorts, but we took the initial list of 250 people who had contacted us interested in home repairs, opened the opportunity to them, received about 75 applications, and that's the initial cohort that's moving through. As soon as we get to a point where we have additional capacity to be able to serve additional people, we will reopen the application process. But it's not fair to people to put them on a waitlist and have them wait eight months to a year in order to be able to get service. We wanted to be able to get this cohort through, open it up again to the next cohort, and move them through.
But they already waiting. They been waiting.
We are providing services now. We have had a number of homeowners already receive service, and we have inspections going on to assess the houses for the remaining list of participants so that we can get the dollars out the door to our program partners as well as the folks who are going through our LED and CDBG funded program.
You know, and you got 250 people on the list. We ain't even helping half. We only helping 75. We ain't even helping 125. I'm sorry, but I, you know, we have these programs, we put them out there, but we put such constraints and restrictions on them. That's why people say, what's the point of being bothered if you're not going to try to help us? So we take this money away from a program that is one that would keep people in their home, whether it's they need their floors fixed or whatever little repairs, if it's LED windows, I understand about the LED program, we get that, I get that. But there are so many ways we could be really helping people to stay housed. We just got through talking about Keep Gang City House. I'm sorry, I can't support it tonight. I understand Beth, what you're doing at Yanceville Place, so it's not against that. But it disturbs me that some of this money is at home repair and then bond money. It's truly disturbing.
Yeah, Mrs. Thurm, Mr. Holston, Mrs. Mayor Protem.
Ms. Blue, if you could clarify it, the way I heard the Assistant City Manager McCray talk about this, the only reason we cut off is not not having the money, it's because you all are short, the housing group is shorter staffed and can't handle anything more than what you have right now. Is that?
Correct.
Did I hear that correct?
Seventy-five applicants is a lot to come through at one time.
And how many people are working on these 75 applications and helping these folks? Do you know?
I have a staff of two that are working on it.
As well as?
Soon to be three, we hope, but right now it's two.
As well as their other duties, right?
Correct.
And there is money available. When you all have the capacity within the department, you have money available to open this back up and fund. We aren't stopping funding that program. There are funds available, is that what you're saying?
Correct, we would be able to allocate 2022 bond funds to future cohorts of the home repair program.
So the way I, thank you, the way I see this is this is just putting money to work sooner, that if we don't have the labor capacity to process more, there's no reason to sit on this hundred and some odd thousand dollars. We've got the money as soon as we're ready to process these and as soon as the department can handle it, and we will fund it. We're not taking money out of that program.
Correct. What's giving us the ability to use these funds in a different direction is the fact that many of these houses are pre-1978 and qualify for the LED program, which has a community development block grant match that goes along with it. So we're able to serve those households without having to touch the bond funds, which allows us to use fewer bond funds towards the remaining home repairs that are not eligible for the home program or the CDBG program.
Thank you for answering that. The way I look at this, this is a matter of putting the funds to use as effectively as we can, given the limitations of the staff that we currently have. For that reason, I'll be supporting it.
And Ms. Thurm, I know you, I know you're covering for them, and that's okay, but that, they have enough people up there to do the work. Some of these applications have been on this list a long time when they had the staff. Now their staff not there for particular reasons that I'm not going to get into personnel stuff about, that if they was there and staff, it could get done. I know what's going on.
Councilwoman Hightower, I'm not covering for anybody. I'm explaining.
Yes, you are. Ms. Thurm, yes, ma'am. You know what? And every time we come up in neighborhood development and stuff is not right, you find the excuses, and that's on you. But I'm telling you, I too know a little what's going on here.
I asked. Councilwoman Hightower, I asked for clarification. I got clarification and I explained how I'm voting. However you want to vote is up to you.
And absolutely, I'm a vote, no, because I know what is being covered up here. And it happens time and time again, every single time. And there's a short end of the stick that is always handed down. I know where it is. And there's enough folk who could get this, who could have done this work. This is, that's no excuse. That's no excuse.
Mr. Holston, did you have a comment?
A question, just a clarification. Ms. Blue, you said that there were some 250 people on the waitlist and then you reached out to them?
They, yes, they were on an initial interest list.
Interest list.
We provided all of them with multiple opportunities, emails and contacts and emailed applications. We only received, I think it was about 84 applications. It's entirely possible that many of those people realized they weren't going to qualify when they started the application process. This is an income limited program.
So all the 250 people on the, or households on the interest list, only 84 responded?
Correct.
And those are the 84 that you're proceeding with?
Correct. There were about eight of those that we determined were not eligible, and so we've got about 75 in the queue right now.
Okay, thank you.
Beth McKee-Huger? Thank you for your patience.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. Thank you for listening and caring so much about people having a good place to live. There's an all saying, everybody's got to be somewhere. They've got to, they really need to be someplace they're not getting kicked out of. And so many of the people earlier this evening were talking about people who have no housing getting kicked out of their spot, people with housing getting evicted. So people need a place to live that fits their paychecks or their disability checks. And tonight we have an opportunity to support building high quality housing that people can afford because it fits their paychecks. And it's complicated, very complicated, to put together the land, the money, the community engagement with neighbors, the construction folks to make that housing possible. And so we have an opportunity tonight to celebrate the people who can do that. And two projects that you've got tonight, Mills Construction Company, and Bobby is here, does an excellent job of building quality housing and affordable housing management as well. And I spend a lot of my time these days when I'm not farming, trying to help faith communities see what they can do about housing. So Yanceville Place Apartments, it's going to be built on land that is currently the Episcopal Church of the Holy Spirit. And the Vandelia Apartments are being welcomed in that neighborhood by five churches there who, so the tenant support team. It's really wonderful to see how our community can come together to really make a difference. It's absolutely essential that you all approve this tonight because your dollars leverage the tax credits. And that application is due this week. Thanks.
Thank you. So that sounds very time sensitive.
Yes.
I want to say that Yanceville Place, after you had the groundbreaking, I did a post on my Facebook page, and the number of people who called me and wanted to know when those units would be available, and it was just the groundbreaking. And I still get calls from people. They are just so excited about the project. So thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for having us and considering our funding application here tonight.
If you would give us your name for the record.
Yeah, sorry. My name is Bobby Funk. I'm the Development Director with Mills Construction. I'll keep my comments brief, but I met Beth and the other folks at Holy Spirit several years ago at this point, as we were considering the first phase of Yanceville Place. And thankfully, we were able to secure funding supported by the city as well as by the state to build Phase One, which is under construction now. Eighty-four units of affordable housing that'll remain affordable into the next 30 years and hopefully beyond the initial 30 years of commitments made by our development teams in coordination with all of our funding partners. So we're thrilled about that. The number to put to the amount of need in the community, currently we have over 650 peoples on our, it's not exactly a waiting list, it's an interest list. So when leasing actually does open up later this summer, we've had 650 people sign up to say we would like to live in these units. So the housing need is enormous. We're here in support of our request for funding to hopefully support a second phase for additional 60 units, as Beth said, in partnership with Holy Spirit Episcopal on the property they currently own, which is adjacent to Yanceville Place. And obviously, if there's any questions about our application, I'm available if there's any questions from y'all. And I want to thank the community development staff who's been super helpful throughout this whole process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm pleased that Yanceville Place Two will be in District Two. And I was there for the groundbreaking, and I'm just looking forward to, because we do need the housing. So thanks to your congregation for moving forward with it.
You're welcome.
Mary Kay?
Yes, and thank you so much. You know, a lot of times in the community, we kind of hear about what are our faith communities doing to help us in this crisis? And I think this is a perfect example of how everyone is coming together and collaborating and with the assistance of the city and the funds and everything else to make sure that it comes to fruition. So, you know, I think it's a start. Maybe some other faith communities will come forward and kind of, you know, a lot of faith communities have a lot of land. And, you know, I was by there and saw, you know, where it was going to go and everything like that. And to me, it's just very exciting. So thank you all so much.
Mayor Von, we do have Jill Fanuff from Affordable Housing Management here as well. She was signed up to speak on Zoom, but she's here in person.
Oh, okay. If you'd like to come and speak, please give us your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Jill Fanuff on behalf of AHM.
Out in the, yeah.
Yes, I'm also a new mom. Thank you very much. I just wanted to introduce myself and be here to support our mission and say thank you. I see some differences. I think that's healthy. I want to be available in any way I can as a developer, tax credit developer, affordable housing developer. I want to make sure that we're aligning our mission as much as possible with the city's objectives. I'm new in this position. I know you have worked with David Levy for a long time, so big shoes to fill, but also a great opportunity to do some things differently. I'm a new mom, older side millennial, do have a decade plus of experience in affordable housing development. So very receptive right now, I think, is the theme right now. So just wanted to be here, thank you all for considering Vandelia Acres. I know that this is, somebody already mentioned this, but these are, these take years to just assemble and put together as projects. They are, we have to be eternal optimists as developers. We have to just assume that this will work and put all the pieces together and just move forward and continue our mission. So I really want, and I know that AHM has some work to do too. I think we're a fantastic, coming from not Greensboro, kind of looking in, my opinion, unsolicited feedback here is, AHM is this like gym in this community? I do think there's some updating that we can do. I am all ears. I'm open for whatever we can do to be a part of this community and to engage as much as possible. I have told a few different folks here that the inclusiveness was already kind of a thing we didn't even have to talk about in certain other metropolitan areas, but I am all, you know, I'm here right now. And we're also reevaluating some corporate, what I've been calling standards of care or, you know, just QA QC processes, quality assurance, quality control, to make sure we're doing our part, not just as a developer, operator, manager, but also making sure that the impact that we have has many, you know, a multiplier effect. Because we can easily just do what we do, build the box, operate the box, say we're an affordable housing provider, but we can also do a lot more too. So I just wanted to say thank you and pretty new to Greensboro, and I have my work cut out for me, but I really appreciate the consideration for Vandelia Acres. And I do think it's a great project.
Well, thank you and welcome to Greensboro.
Thank you.
And AHM, I think, is one of, you know, they are a go-to partner of ours. David Levy has always been wonderful to work with. And one thing that I really like about AHM is that they have done a good job of building across the city. You know, we've talked about not having affordable homes always dumped in Districts One and Two. One, the product that AHM has done has always been top shelf. You would never know that it is affordable. And they offer amenities which many builders do not. So I want to thank you for doing that, for doing a nice product, offering amenities, and making sure that they are built throughout the city. You know, people work in different places. They go to church in different places. It's good to have housing in different places. So I look forward to getting to know you and continuing this relationship with AHM.
Thank you. And just on that note, I believe in deconcentration of poverty. I think Vandelia, I mean, we have our other, you know, parcels next door, but I think that area all around is, it's quality housing. It's a campus at this point that we'd like to continue programming. We own the land. We'd like to continue working through our mission. But I will do whatever I can to continue the good work AHM has, to spread the love wherever we can and make sure we're, you know, not doing the same old thing. And there's proper representation everywhere. So thank you.
Thank you. And your baby's been really well behaved.
No, thank you. So in full transparency, I've met Jill. She and I've had lunch. We've talked about this, so she's aware of my feelings about this. But more from the MWBE perspective, and I will say it's good to have a fresh, a person who comes from an area who is accustomed to just this. She understands it. And because I'm tired of fighting folk about it and get them to understand being inclusive, how important it is to be in a city that's dominantly black and brown and having people represented correctly. But unfortunately, I still can't support because they've used the same old art. My question is, and I really would love. My question is, and I really would love to support it, I mean, because I like Jill. She's got a five-month-old. I'm a grandmama to a five-month-old. We had a lot to talk about, share pictures. It was so exciting. Spent more time talking about that. But I want to know, where's the MWBE piece of this? Have these contracts been vetted for MWBE? Not for landscape architecture. That's not MWBE. And then one is not very clear, Southern Repair. So, because it's looking at taking the contract that they have, and that was the other piece that we were supposed to be doing, was working with, in housing, neighborhood development, to get more minority contractors involved with these nonprofit contracts. So, when are these going to be vetted for MWBE? Because it's not here. There's no goals listed. So, once this is approved, is that when it goes? Or is --
Once the project has awarded funds from NCHFA, that is when they go into the process of solicitation, and that's when they work with the MWBE office to set the goals based on the final construction budget and to go through the solicitation process to establish the goals and the minority participation. So, at this point, what they are assessed on in their application is their development team, and did they provide inclusivity in that development team? Once they get the awards from NCHFA, that's when we go into the more traditional MWBE And just wanted to let you know, we have two new contractors who have applied to be part of the rehab pool, who are both MBE contractors.
See, in the rehab pool, there you go. There's two more. So, we could help more people, I'm telling you. I'm telling you. So, no, anyway.
We do have a motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Mrs. Thurm. Council, please vote.
I know. Only because I like you, Jill, because I told you the other day. What did I tell you? And there's hope. Let me say this, there's hope. Fresh mind, fresh eyes, coming from a place that understands being inclusive and diverse.
And that passes nine to zero.
Jill, you don't know how big that was. Don't mess it up.
So, do we have any board appointments? Anybody with a board or commission appointment? No? We do have a request to change the July 2 meeting.
Does that cancel?
No. Well, we have to have it for speakers from the floor.
Four of us are going to be out of town.
So, we could change it to, we could change it to either July 11th or July 25th.
Madam Mayor, I recall, I think we went through this before, and it has to be within the month. So, it would have to be, of course, in July. So, I would think the July 11th, I'm fine with that.
Is July 11th fine with?
Hold on, everybody's a little --
Oh, I'm in June, I'm sorry. July 9th or 30th?
From July 4th week. No meeting that week.
July 9th.
Yeah.
Five to nine.
I go for the 9th.
So, can I have a motion to reschedule the meeting of July 2 to July 9?
Second?
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Okay. And one thing that I did neglect to mention earlier is that this is Municipal Clerks Week, and I want to thank our clerks for the great job that they do and also send our sympathy to Tori for, you know, for the loss in her life. But we appreciate the great job that the Clerk's Office does responding to every one of us and 300,000 people in the city. So, thank you very much. I'll end with mine. Sharon?
Brief. She's rolling.
Let me start. I pretty much have said what I needed to say tonight, you know. But a couple of things. At work session the other day, we had a pay equity study, and I didn't say a lot, but I don't trust none of what that says. No municipality is perfect. None. And so, there's, I've heard too many concerns from longtime employees to make me really doubt and question what I heard, you know. And I'll tell you, you can fix any study the way you want to, depending on what you study. If you don't study all of it and you pick a selection of it, then yeah, you can make the numbers look like you want to make them look. But I'm telling you, I still question it. I have some serious concerns about it. I also would like to offer us to do a customer service training. I get a lot of complaints that people say, "We don't know how to treat customers that call in here," you know, if they even answer the telephone. And get a lot of that, "Don't answer the phone." And I think that we, as a city, ought to be accessible when people call us. We ought to be here. I think --
Do you talk about the generic city number? Generic number?
Doesn't matter.
Do the customer service people work from home, or do they work in the office?
For the most part, they work in the office, but we have several customer service people. So, let me come back to you with the correct answer, but in general, you've got folks in water, you've got folks in --
Yeah, I would like to know if they're all working in the office.
Sure.
And that goes along with a previous conversation we've had regarding a remote policy.
Well, I mean, it doesn't matter whether it's generic number or the office number. If I call you, I ought to be able to get somebody sometime and not a voicemail. So, what it says to me, I know I'm a difficult individual to deal with. I own it. I wear it well. But you're watching the number that pops up on your phone, and you ain't answering it. I know that. I'm smart enough to figure that out. I know what's going on. Doesn't matter. When I'm calling someone, I'm not calling because I'm sitting around with absolutely nothing to do. It's because there's somebody behind me who has called me, just like Ms. Samuel, when she reached out to me. There are people who are tapping on my shoulder saying, "Hey, help me fix this." I can only help them fix it if I have a way to go get it fixed. So, I really would like for us to truly understand what that means, the customer service. "It's time to take her home, it's bedtime." So, but I just, I want to just share that because it's really bothering me a lot, great deal. So, but I'll let Zach take IRC. I won't touch IRC tonight, but --
Then please.
Dr. Wells?
Thank you.
Well, you know, when we listen to the situation that Ms. Cindy was referring to, that they didn't have enough people, I think that's something we ought to see about. I mean, if we don't have enough people to do the job, something's wrong. If we have, the big discussion was, "There is money, but we just can't serve them because we don't have enough people." So, I think, well, we need to do something about increasing the staff. The homeless population and that department deals with housing people. And if we have any department that needs help, it ought to be that department, that has all of the people to meet the needs of our citizens. So, I was a little concerned about that being a reason, when that's something that can be fixed, is we just find some more staff. Seems to me, interim city manager, seems to me, we can just find some more staff members. I want to say that in District 2, we're really proud of two big groundbreaking, no, one was a groundbreaking, the other was ribbon cutting. On the 24th of April, we were at A&amp;T for the resurgence. That is going to be that five-story building on East Market Street. I'm claiming it, but really, it's in District 1. But we were all there and enjoyed that festivity. And then last week, we had ribbon cutting at Revolution Mill. And whenever there's new things happening in the district and in our city, it just shows that we're moving forward, and I'm really proud about that.
They did an amazing job on that building.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. I'd encourage people to go, and there will be eateries and other things and little stores they could visit, but what they've done to the interior of that building is stunning.
Oh, Revolution Mill. And Goldie, it's okay that you talked, because actually, I've claimed Windsor Center. I've kind of, I've taken that.
Windsor Center, too.
Mr. Matheny?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I sent you an email in regards to the email we received from Assistant City Manager Davis regarding the IRC's restructuring decisions. I will tell you that the area in downtown, if you look at the map, it used to just have two districts, four districts, I believe, touch it now, and of course, the at-large and the mayor covered as well. But we all should care about all parts of our city. To, for the IRC to make a decision to no longer allow families is concerning. There have been more calls at the IRC than there have been calls of nuisance at three establishments that we've been able to shut down in the last 12 months. So, if you ask our legal department, like, the fact that we're allowing the IRC to operate, they should be thankful. But they're not operating in conditions that are good. And so, it's almost as if we're keeping folks that probably need more help than the IRC can give and pushing families out into the street. That's a problem. I will tell you that meetings today and yesterday, the amount of sexual assaults on both women and men has increased. Again, who are we helping? And it's a problem. And what Ronald was saying was Lisa, his friend, is sleeping on the floor at the IRC, underneath the table. That's what he's saying. Now, I know he's hard to understand. I can tell you that the downtown ambassadors are going to take her a yoga mat tomorrow so that she can sleep on. For some reason, DJI has been one of the first calls for people to make. They send folks with ankle bracelets to Sean and the downtown ambassadors. Should probably be going to GPD. Today, I got a call about a woman with a son who's getting ready to get kicked out. So, we're talking about keeping people in their homes. I am very much for that. I'm also thinking about how we help. Like, there's a success story with a guy that I've talked about, that I sent you a picture of. He goes by Chat. I'll just leave it at that. We were able to work with Chat to get him housing, but he needed $300. So, it's not only keeping people from being evicted, it's helping folks that don't have the income available to get into, because what do you got to do when you get into an apartment? Is to pay deposits, not only housing deposits, but also power and other deposits. And so, I'm all for that. But going back to the IRC, you know, that's what they were talking about with Lisa and why she's got her paperwork. I will tell you, I've invited y'all to meet with the downtown ambassador team, and I would love for y'all to sit with Sean, the manager, and Adam, and listen to the stories, and listen to the stories of what is going on with the IRC. And to make it a statement today that they're pushing families out is a mistake. Also, when it relates to the safe parking, they have one security guard that basically stands there and doesn't do anything, nothing.
And Zach, I'm glad you said that, safe parking, because I've heard from families who say, "She'd rather stay in the Walmart parking lot than to be at the IRC."
And with everything that's going on around the corner at what is the front door, which is along Washington Street, and all you got to do is go by there. Goldie, you say you go by there Sundays. I mean, I'm there a lot during the week. You know, I'm not going in, I'm not trying to run there, you know, I try to do it, but it's not in a good position.
Nope.
It's not in a good managerial position.
Nope.
And I think it's time for either city staff or city council, we needed a, you know, as Malik said, we got to hold some people accountable. By God, I can tell you, the nonprofit that I run, I'm held accountable. I think you heard tonight, meetings and open and all that stuff, there ain't one nonprofit in the state of North Carolina that allows open meetings. The IRC doesn't, East Greensboro now doesn't, the Chamber doesn't, nobody does. You can't get anything done, right? By the way, Jason Hicks was at my open meeting at the state of downtown, could he ask me any question he wanted to. So, he does attend meetings that we have that are open. But, you know, just thinking about the companies that we find and the whatever, what is the return on investment? And I pulled up the former city manager's letter bragging about the $32.9 million that we've invested since the beginning of 2000. What's ROI? Doge's right. It's gotten worse. The IRC management, the way, what's going on, maybe they took on too much. They were supposed to do trade classes, job skills, resume and jobs, GED classes, interview chairing, financial literacy. I never hear of that going on. Never hear about it. So, I would like to see some of that. I know there's going to be a city report. Trey, I don't know if it's come out yet.
No, and I, so just so I can give some context to what Councilman Matheny is talking about, I've worked with several of you about concerns, whether it's a business, night establishments. We've established a safety routine that will go out to locations that may present themselves as a potential nuisance. IRC has become that. I think I communicated to you all, there was over a 200% increase in public safety calls, that's between police, fire, 911, and our EMS partners have notified us that they feel unsafe in responding there without police presence. That prompted us to take a team that included our police, obviously, our code enforcement, our building inspection crew, and all of our other teams that are part of our safety review. At that time, we did meet with the executives at, or the team, the leaders at the IRC, and notified them that whatever we found, we would come back and prepare them. I will share that with council once we complete all the documents. Attorney Harold with our legal office, also myself and her went to that visit as well on site. We'll prepare something. But what we've been doing is trying to work with IRC as our partners to allow them an opportunity to address some of those issues. I think what I communicated earlier was one of their ideas to remedy some of the crowd or the unsafe environment. As you know, we don't have control over what they do and how they operate. We can only provide suggestions. I will also say that myself and Assistant City Manager McCray have worked with our county partners, most notably Victor Israel, who's over the Health and Human Services area, to try and identify some different opportunities, as well as working with our COC partners. try and identify some different opportunities, as well as working with our COC partners. So we'll continue to do that. Hopefully, the document that we provide, again, we will provide that to the IRC executive team to make sure that they're aware of the issues and the concerns that we might have as city staff. But some of that as well, we've been very candid in communicating the concerns that we hear, whether that be from you as council members, from community members, and also the things that people come and bring to city council on the floor. Again, we're doing everything we can to first help them as partners, but we also gotta maintain, as Councilman Matheny's saying, the safety of the people that they're trying to serve.
Let me, let me.
Trey, can I ask a quick question? Can I ask a quick question?
What Trey just said is EMS has sent over a letter that says, "We do not feel safe when called." GPD then has to go clear this, the area, so that EMS gets out. How many times a day is that happening? So far this year, since four months, they've had over 500 calls for service.
Good Lord.
You know, I have to say, though, part of the problem is, the IRC has become, I don't, the place where people are sent. They are over capacity. I mean, to blame them for the problem, I think, is kind of unfair, because they are expected to take everybody who walks through the door. They're overcrowded, they probably can't supply the services they wanted to.
Mayor, I'm with you, but I will tell you, they kicked just as many people out, it seems like, as they saved. And the lady that I got today that is looking for some kind of help is scared to go to the IRC. There are people in the street, the washing machines have been broken.
Imagine how the IRC workers feel. They are afraid at times. They are afraid of the people, they're afraid of the new drugs that are in there.
But then, why are they kicking families out and keeping the ones that are doing the drugs?
I don't know. It might have just been a matter of numbers. I don't know that we are in a position where we can really question. I think, you know, I think it is, bring them in and ask those questions.
Madam Mayor, with all due respect, we fund them. I would tell you this, if there were so many issues with an organization that I ran, I would imagine I would get called to the carpet and be able to try to answer questions.
But Zach, what's the alternative? Close them?
Let's help them. Let's help them.
That's what I'm saying, but it's.
That's fine.
Yes.
Because it's bad right now.
We do have, we do have.
But do they have, do they have enough social workers? You say, do you have enough caseworkers?
I'll go after you, Timmy. Have we had?
Well, I actually had a question before, but I let him talk, because I wanted to ask Trey, all the people you're taking over there, are we okay with fire capacity? Are we, because if they're just piling in, that's a concern.
Yes, ma'am, we are okay with fire capacity. I think the other concerns are just some of the conditions and safety.
It sounds as if we need to have, sit down and have a conversation, not only with the management team, but perhaps the board, their board president, their board leadership. It is a nonprofit. We don't know what direction the board is giving, because the board may have said, keep the low barriers, take those people, send the other people to families. We don't know that situation. So I'd like to suggest that maybe Trey, Chris, Nasha, I don't know who the appropriate person would be from the city's standpoint, but reach out to their board and see if we can have a discussion so that if it's, see where the breakdown is. For the longest time, the IRC has been the one partner we could really count on when it comes to homelessness. And, you know, I wanna take a look at it and see, I would like to know more definitively, where is this breaking down? So we're not pointing fingers, but we're coming at this in a collaborative approach of, let's talk about it and see what we can do to make the situation better.
And it could be that they are just so overwhelmed with people that they can't do anything good.
Right. And in my understanding.
When they went to the 24 hour, 24 hours, so they're there all night, and so they have workers in there on Sunday morning, there's three people there.
And they don't, they don't have, they don't have beds. It is a place for people to drop in.
It's a warming center. So we set it up. Right. So my understanding is that, is that, one, since they have expanded the hours, they probably trebled the number of persons who are using those services. And anytime you do something like that in such a short period of time, there're gonna be some, some challenges. I think we're seeing those challenges. You know, Zach talked about the crimes he's hearing about. There are also the issues with the staff, as someone said. There are also issues with the families. The question is, if there are over 500 calls that are coming in, if there are the crimes that are going there. I've heard that, you know, as late as 2:01 morning, there was a little child running in the parking lot. The question is, do we want all of that mixed in together? I don't have the answer, but I think what this really calls for is for us to have a really detailed collaborative conversation with the IRC, with city staff, with city council, with the IRC board, to find out where the sweet spot is gonna be. We are counting on them, because there are a lot of us who will probably say, well, Center City has cleared out in the evenings. Well, that's because they've gone to the IRC as a warming center. But they don't have beds there, is it the best environment? It's as good as it can be right now. Can it be better? Yes. Can we play a part in making it better? Yes. Should we? Absolutely. But so should the IRC. So as an entity itself, I don't wanna point the finger at them, I just know that we need to find a way to make it better and safer.
Something's gotta change. Now, let me close out with this, because Yvonne said to be quick.
That was me, she told.
We, the point of what I was saying also is, we can't continue to stick our heads in the sand.
No.
And act like nothing's happening. To Sharon's point on a lot of cases. But, you know, obviously, it's downtown, we're downtown, the crimes, the sexual assaults over the last couple of weeks have increased, the calls are increased, EMS to go pick a gentleman up off the floor. So think about, we're using those resources from GPD, what else could they be doing? And was it costing the city of Greensboro? Now, housing, we've let people down. We have thoroughly dropped the ball. Regency in, $3.2 million. We have let people down. What are we gonna do to do it right? I don't know where John Demery Way is, but we have got to fix those two things and do it fast, because we have let folks down. We've been talking about it for two and a half years. It's screwed up, let's fix it, do what we can, I don't care if we have to pay to get the property, let's do something and quit taking credit for something that's sitting empty.
And John Demery could easily have housed some families.
We're letting.
You know, I'll say, I'm disappointed in the Regency that we went through two rounds.
Well, I told y'all it wasn't gonna work out.
I know that our legal department is speaking to Partnership Homes attorney. I'll play nice for now. But I think the best remedy for that is for us to take control of that property back, because I don't believe that Partnership Homes can, can provide what they originally said they would. And I'm gonna leave it at that for right now.
That's fair, but, you know, honestly, and I've said this for probably 15 years, I know Councilwoman Hoffman agrees, the only problem I got is I don't want the city to mess it up even worse. We're not good landlords. We don't have vision. We lack it.
We don't have any vision.
Because we're not able to get out of our own way sometimes. And this is an exact opportunity that we botched.
We do the same stuff over and over.
We did it. John Demery Way, Councilwoman Hightower, I think brought that up to me even a year and a half or two years ago. We've owned that property, I think, since 17 or 18, and it's set empty.
We've owned it longer than that.
So it is out for bids now, isn't it?
It's out for RFQ, Request for Qualifications. Should be past that, and then determine what they are.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I can answer that question. The RFQs were issued back in March, on March 22nd. The statement of qualifications were due on April 19th. And we've had a couple of virtual Q and A sessions and onsite inspections for those that were interested. Those individual firms or interested developers that desired to submit the RFP, they've gotten a notification that, to submit that RFP that opens up on May 10th. So this week is the opening for those individuals that pass the RFQ qualification period to submit the RFP or to begin to submitals. The responses are due back by May 14th, June 14th, I apologize. And so at this time, we know that there are at least four qualified respondents that moved through that RFQ process. So we will have more updates in a couple of weeks as we move towards the finalization of the RFP process.
Well, I wanna see who those four are, because that's the other problem. We keep going back to the same folk over and over and over and over again. I'm gonna say it again, as Zach just got through, talking about thinking outside the box, we don't. We do the same stuff all the time. Man, I'm telling you, it's never gonna change the community as long as you stay in that same.
Zach, did you have any other comments? Okay, Mrs. Hoffman?
Yeah, I'll just comment quickly on the IRC. I can remember not that many years ago, when it was a totally different atmosphere there on Temple Emanuel, we had a spring dinner there, a dignity dinner. You know, their board invited people in from the, you know, from the outside all the time to really give tours through that. It was just a totally different atmosphere. So I don't know whether the management is just overwhelmed at this point, if they've taken on more, if they feel pressured to have taken on more than they really can, but I think we have to try to sit down and help them and figure it out. To change the subject, Sunday was Yom HaShoah. Yom HaShoah is the day of, the annual day of remembrance for Jews killed during the Holocaust. Six million, which was an astounding number, that was half the Jewish population of Europe. Seven months ago today, Israel was brutally attacked again, and the greatest loss of Jewish life since the Holocaust. 1,300 Jews were killed that day, another 3,300 were wounded, and 150 hostages taken. And we have 30,000 Palestinians who have lost their lives in Gaza at this point because of this. So I'm just asking that we, you know, we keep this in mind, we cannot, we can hope and pray that maybe we are close, getting closer to a ceasefire, I'm not sure at this point, but I think we have to hope and certainly pray for that and an end to this. Thank you.
Tammy?
There have been a number of events that I've attended in the past couple of weeks since we've last met, but I did wanna give a shout out to GPD on a very successful food produce giveaway. The Saturday before that, they had a big event off of Wendover Avenue to allow kids and everybody else to come, have hamburgers, hot dogs, to see a lot of the police equipment, to understand that, for the kids, that policemen are their friends, and to go to the policeman when need be. I had an opportunity to, at that outing, to meet one of our new civilian traffic force. And what an inspiration she was. I don't recall her name, and I'm sorry. Nicole. But she was incredible, she was excited, she was engaging, she showed us her vehicle, and I'm very, very excited that that program's gotten off the ground. And if you're lucky enough, if you're unfortunate enough to need help and lucky, lucky enough to have Nicole be the one that comes to, to answer your call, I feel really good about that step. I started to say something about the food drive a few days later. There was a produce giveaway at Colts Farm in District 5 for the residents of that neighborhood. And what a blessing it was to give away beautiful, beautiful produce. And I just wanna thank GPD for their efforts and for their involvement. This particular, this particular neighborhood is predominantly Hispanic neighborhood, and it's so important to reach out to that community, as we heard tonight, the fear about, in that community about the police, and especially the picked up fear that the kids have learned. And it was so important to have that program out in our neighborhoods. It was a super event, and I'm thrilled that we're doing that and look forward to participating more in the, the future. I also had the opportunity to spend, gosh, an hour, an hour and a half at the Real Time Information Center out on Swing Road. That is so impressive, and what a boon that is. And talk about assisting our officers to be more productive, to be more, to be safer in doing their jobs, to help the community in several, several different ways. And for those of you on council that haven't been out there, I would highly recommend that you go spend some time and then talk to your businesses in your district about participating in that Real Time Information Center, because it is making a difference every single day in our community. And what a great investment in technology to help us move forward and address some of the crime issues in our community.
Thank you, Mayor Protan.
Next weekend, Bennett College will have its graduation and its reunion classes, and I'm one of the reunion classes. So as you see, people who look sophisticated and smart walking around the city, they're probably Bennett Bell, so just say hi to them. That was one other thing. Oh, well, that's it.
Okay. Mary Kay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A lot of things going on in the city the last couple of weeks, I'll just kind of fly through them. Yes, I was at the Community Day Event by the police, and I want to echo what Mrs. Thurm was saying about the civilian traffic investigator. She was so excited about her job. I mean, she was showing us everything and how they get to do, what they can do and what they can't do, and all of those things. But so it was really, I really think it's gonna make a difference and free up some of our officers to do the things that they need to do. We had the Human Rights Department, Human Rights Commission Fair Housing Luncheon in April, many of the council were there. The Telecommunicator Awards and all of the lifesavers, many of us were there for that. April 20th was Earth Day, which was a huge success. And they had the Live Green Awards, and it was, it was just packed out there. It was Achilles Park, and it was just amazing how many people were there. Let's see, the grand opening of Safety Town, sponsored by the Greensboro Police Foundation, that is at Barber Park. If you haven't been out there to see it, please go, I know several people were there for that. And beyond that, I think that's about it. And I wanted to congratulate the mayor, her daughter is graduating this coming weekend from UNC Chapel Hill, so.
Chapel Hill, yes, very excited for her.
Yes. So that, I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Mr. Holston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I won't repeat all the different events that we've all attended, they've been very, very exciting for our residents and also for us. I will stick with the, with the housing theme. I wanna say that the conversation we had this evening regarding the eviction mitigation was very good, you know, for that $440,000, we can find a way to actually get that into our budget to keep folks in their homes or give them the best chance of being in their homes. That is critical. And next is that Fair Housing Luncheon sponsored by Human Rights, and Dr. Love Jones and Cindy Blue and Liz Alfrisson did an excellent job. And, you know, Fair Housing means a lot to me. And, you know, fair housing means a lot to me. I will say that, last but not least, we talked about in housing and thinking outside the box. I know I had a conversation with the city manager's office regarding this recent news that on, on East Gate City Boulevard, there was a recent sale, the sale of that roadway inn that's at the intersection of East Gate City and I guess that's I-40. And it sold for some two.
Cedar Fort.
Cedar Fort Road. It sold for like $2 million. I would gather to say that that's, that's an operating facility that folks could live in, cook in, meet in, have case management in. And again, it was some $2 million that it sold for. So in, in thinking outside the box, I do encourage our city staff to, to look at those types of opportunities for us. Housing is a crisis. Housing is a challenge. It's not limited just to Greensboro. It's nationwide, but we can think of some ways to help grow our way out of this. We can build our way out of it, grow our way out of it. We're standing here talking about $3 million for the Regency Inn, and we see what state it's in, but the roadway inn sold for $2 million. And that could have been one of the creative ways. There could be others in our, in our community that we can look at that can help us with that need. So, Madam Mayor, I'll end with that.
You do know that we want all of the greats. So I like to try and start working on it too.
But when it comes down to being creative and something that's up and running, because, because last I checked, the Regency Inn isn't up and running. And we need to spend some more money. Sometimes, sometimes it takes money.
Okay, I'd like my comments now.
To make it happen.
I think it's the mayor's turn.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all. I know it's been a long night, but I would appreciate a few more minutes of your time. And I think my grandchildren might be watching, so I want to give a shout out to Macy and Keaton. Love you guys. I am immensely proud of the work that we have done as a council. When I was elected mayor, almost 11 years ago, we were in a much different position than we are right now. We still had not recovered from the recession and the loss of our legacy employers. Most of us have spent 10 or more years together, and we have seen dramatic changes. It's taken hard work, trust, and dedication. Last week, Governor Cooper noted that there has been a business renaissance in the triad. He went on to say that no region in the state has made more progress than the Piedmont Triad. That did not happen by accident, and our role in the business renaissance was pivotal. We took a leap of faith by investing our money and resources in the Greensboro Randolph Megasite and the Piedmont Triad International Airport. They were difficult and controversial decisions, but they will positively impact our region for generations to come. So far, these decisions have resulted in over $13 billion worth of economic announcements. We are now talking in billions. We used to talk in millions. We recently updated our water and sewer extension policy to reflect the growing needs of our region. Greensboro will take the lead in providing water and sewer service to capitalize on well-paying jobs that are coming to our area. In 2009, when I joined the council as an at-large representative, one of the first votes that we took was to affirm the Greensboro Aquatic Center. Now we have the largest, and I would argue, the best aquatic center in the country. It is active with swimming and diving events throughout the year and is home to the Matt Brown Learn to Swim Program for second graders. So far, 14,622 second graders have been through the Learn to Swim programs, saving lives we don't even know. Similarly, we took another leap of faith when we built the Steven Tanger Center for Performing Arts. It has been a catalyst for growth in downtown Greensboro, but beyond, and Tanger has outperformed all projections. Developers and employers are bringing well-paying jobs and housing to southeast Greensboro, where we have wanted growth to go all this time, and it will be the home of the Windsor-Chavis Noco Community Center. We can all take credit for that. Over the last few years, we have been intentional in improving our relationships with the North Carolina Legislature, the county, and our counterparts in High Point. Their support has been invaluable to our success. When I look back at the last 11 years, I'm proud of all the things that we have accomplished. My goal was to move this city forward, and we have. I enjoy being mayor. I always say that this is the best job in the city of Greensboro. But after a great deal of thought and prayer, I have decided not to seek reelection. I do have plans for life after being mayor. They do not include elective office, and that is all I plan to say at this point. In the meantime, we have a lot to do. We're still facing a number of challenges, many we just talked about this evening, such as adequate attainable housing, making sure public safety has the resources that they need, and ensuring that our residents have the skills and transportation to compete successfully for these great well-paying jobs that we are bringing in to our community. There are 574 days, approximately 19 months, until the next council is sworn in. You will have my complete attention and the attention of this council as we continue to move things forward. I debated on whether or not I wanted to call a press conference or send out a press release, but in the end, I wanted to do it right here, where the work's been done, the sausage has been made, and results have happened. So it has been my pleasure and will continue to be my pleasure to be your mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, with that, I move to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Good point, good point.
Thank you. I just moved to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
You didn't have to say, "City manager," if you had something to say or a term.